Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order and get going here. Will the clerk please note those in attendance?
All will be noted.
Will you please rise while the honor guard presents the colors?
City of White Bear Lake, a flag of your nation and a pledge to follow. Present arms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good. Let's jump right into item two, approval of the minutes. I trust everyone's had a chance to review the minutes from the August 22nd, 2023 meeting. If so, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Move to approve.
Second. A motion of second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, one abstention. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Item three, adoption of the agenda. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
The motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. Item four, consent agenda. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion of second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. Item five, visitors and presentations. Ms. Crawford, we have the swearing in of our new police chief.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, we will be swearing in our new chief of police, Dale Hager. So after a few remarks, the city clerk will administer the oath of office. Dale's wife Kelly will then pin his badge, and we will wrap things up by hearing from Dale himself. So Dale was born and raised in Minnesota, but his law enforcement career began in North Dakota 26 years ago. He eventually moved back to Minnesota and was hired at the Lionel Lakes Police Department, where he served for 15 years and achieved the rank of sergeant. In 2014, he was selected as the administrative captain for White Bear Lake Police Department. Along the way, he served as a narcotics officer, canine officer, and dare officer, investigator, firearms instructor, field training instructor, and defensive tactics instructor. He holds a bachelor's degree in law enforcement and a master's in emergency management. He is also a graduate of the 251st FBI National Academy. In addition, Dale helps shape the future of law enforcement by teaching courses at Century College and Hamlin University. Whether it be Night to Unite, Market Fest, the farmer's market, or one of our many outreach events, Dale has been a familiar and welcoming face to this community. He helped establish our community emergency response team, everybody you see in the yellow shirts here, and served as a liaison to Triad. I witnessed his popularity last weekend firsthand when he received two rounds of applause and numerous hugs when he simply walked in the room at the Triad picnic. In his downtime, Dale enjoys playing basketball, volleyball, and reminding us all that he is a pickleball champion. But above all, his favorite things to do are spend time with his friends and family. Not only is he more than qualified, he has prepared his entire career to take on the responsibilities of chief of police. His commitment to community policing, respect for officers and city administration, and approachable demeanor has served and will continue to serve him well, or serve our community and organization very well. So it is my pleasure to present Dale Hager as White Bear Lake's next chief of police. Chief, will you join me at the podium?
Kelly? Please raise your hand and then key after me. Aye?
Aye.
You state your name.
Dale Hager.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
And will discharge.
And will discharge.
And faithfully execute.
And faithfully execute.
The duties devolving upon me.
The duties devolving upon me.
As chief of police.
As chief of police.
For the city of White Bear Lake.
For the city of White Bear Lake.
Without fear or favor.
Without fear or favor.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Holy cats. I'm a little nervous. We've got like three ex-chiefs in this room, and like 15 or 20 of my former bosses are in this room, so I have a lot. I'm very nervous about this, but I think I'll get through. Mr. Mayor, City Manager Crawford, members of the council, I have an overwhelming feeling of gratitude tonight. I'm incredibly grateful for your continued support of the White Bear Lake Police Department. I'm grateful for the last nine years here in White Bear Lake that I've benefited from this fantastic relationship I have with the council, we have with the council, and with other departments in the city, to include the fire department, as well as our incredible citizens and our volunteer groups like Triad and like CERT and like our reserves. I'm very humbled to be here. I'm also very grateful for the many leaders I've had in this profession. Each one of those leaders have taught me much about policing and relationships and what it means to serve others. Leaders, many of them are sitting up in front of me now, but many of them are behind me. Leaders like Dave Picha and Julie Swanson and John Swinson, Kelly McCarthy and Phil Henry, my father-in-law Tom Ladwig, Dick Hickman, Mike Rumpson, and many, many others who have taught me about leadership. I'm so very grateful for them. However, if I'm being honest, the person I have to, I've learned the most from about leadership is my wife Kelly. While I suspect during the many, 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 many times that she's told me what to do and where to be and how to act, I suspect she's never really felt that I actually really appreciated that, and I'm very grateful that she is, she's my north star, and I really appreciate the leadership lessons that she's taught me. Speaking of family, I also want to thank my son Nick and his wife and their three-year-old daughter, Grand Forks. I also want to thank my crazy smart son Lincoln and my beautiful and very athletic daughter Brindle for being here as well. My brothers and sisters are also here, and many of my lifelong friends are in the back as well, and I, and I want to thank them too, as they've served as my mentors and my inspiration. Lastly, I'm grateful for the White Bear Lake Police Department. I know I have representatives from many different departments in this room, and I'm a little biased, but I think that we have the best cops in the state. Yeah, I think that's great. I also thank our civilian staff and everybody that works with us is top-notch. I can't ask for anything more than to work with people and amongst people that have big hearts and strong work ethics. I'm confident I can rely on my coworkers in this department to help me through this transition that I'm in. I'm also confident that they're gonna help me tackle any problems that lie before us. I want to thank you to the cops and staff, and staff that are here tonight and those that couldn't make it, for your tireless work for, in a challenging position, which is always hard and often thankless. These men and women uniformed behind me are what makes all of this work as a city, and I'm really grateful for them. Thank you again for the opportunity. I'm excited to be part of what the future holds for the city of White Bear Lake and the White Bear Lake Police Department. Thank you. Now I think we should leave. We'll leave. Thank you all this.
Take, take your time.
Weight balance for the camera.
Can you do that the whole meeting?
I can just hold that the whole.
I'll just go like this the whole time.
It's other tasks, I think, on your resume. The job description.
Got a white, got a white.
I didn't know I'd get to do this one, I guess.
The white balance of camera, it zooms in in the white and it gets all the other colors right. Camera has to get a good view of white. It can't be shiny. Yeah, that's too shiny.
I appreciate it though.
It's too shiny.
It's got a.
It just caught me off guard.
I once knew how it all worked, but I don't understand anymore.
Sounds good. All right. Now that I'm holding that book, I can read a proclamation about the United States of America. Just pivot to that. Similar type of things. All right, item five B, Constitution Week Proclamation. I look forward to this. I have been looking forward to this. It's an exciting proclamation, so I'm just gonna jump right in and read it. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule of law. Whereas September 17, 2023 marks the 236th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. Whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebration which will commemorate the occasion. Whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore be it resolved that I Dan Lewis met by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of White Bear Lake, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals that the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. And I just realized I signed my copy, not the official one, so now I'm gonna sign the official one.
Make sure that those official documents end up in the proper place.
I will. I will. Right here. Okay. All right. Item six A, public hearings. The second reading of an ordinance prohibiting the use of cannabis products in public places. I believe Ms. Crawford is taking this.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the council, so tonight you will hold a public hearing and a second reading. As part of the bill legalizing the use of cannabis, the legislature did not prohibit the use of cannabis in public places. Instead, it gave the authority to local units of government the right to do that. However, the use of cannabis involving inhalation of smoke, aerosol, or vapor is prohibited in, at any location where smoking is prohibited under the Minnesota Clean Indoor Air Act. There are other specific location prohibitions in the law, such as a public school, but there is not a general prohibition on the use of, in public places. So at the direction of the council, the city attorney and staff prepared an ordinance prohibiting the use of cannabis in public places within city limits, which means any park, any right-of-way, or any parking lot. And so highlights of that ordinance in, in your packet are, of course, definitions, and then it prohibits the use of cannabis in public places. The penalty is a petty misdemeanor, but the ordinance also states an administrative penalty may be imposed, and the ordinance would be effective on the first day of publication. And so when we are talking about where it's prohibited, again, that include how the ordinance reads right now. Public parks, public parking lots, sidewalks, and rights-of-way, and then, and any facilities that the city would, would own. So with that, the city attorney and I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Council, we have questions, comments, what we'd like to do. Councilmember Edberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Ms. Crawford, I don't have an issue with prohibiting public use of cannabis. Parks, as described. What I do have an interest in is ensuring that our treatment of cannabis is in parity with our treatment of tobacco. Could you explain how this aligns with our current other prohibitions about smoking of tobacco or other products? You wrote, the memo references the indoor Minnesota Indoor Smoking Act, but I'm not clear about how that applies to other places and how our policy aligns or does not align.
Sure.
May I, can I add alcohol to that, Mr. Edberg?
Sure.
Considering the toxicity, you know, kind of kill two birds with one stone, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mayor, Councilmember Edberg and Councilmember Jones, I do not have our tobacco and alcohol ordinances in front of me, but we do not prohibit the use of tobacco in public right-of-way on sidewalks. I cannot confirm if we prohibit it in parks. Alcohol, under Minnesota state law, you cannot walk around with an open container. Maybe perhaps in Nanoka you can right now, but.
Please.
Just quickly, I mean, the reality is this is more closely aligned with the liquor prohibitions than it is tobacco prohibitions. I mean, you walk down a sidewalk and, and smoke a cigarette, but not drink a beer. So it really is more aligned with, with intoxicant like alcohol than it is with tobacco.
And I will add, so we brought a most restrictive ordinance with the thought that you could loosen that up. It is entirely up to the city council's discretion, but we did put everything in, and you may remove things at your, at your wish.
Yes, please.
One more quick. Keep in mind, the way the, the law is set up, if you look at the definition of public place where it says it does not include any of the following, technically the most restrictive ordinance you could have had says everywhere but those places, which would have been a much bigger universe of, of places within the city. So instead, this focuses that down, that whittles that down, just to purely public places, the parks, the streets, the sidewalks, those sorts of things, rather than, could be private parking lots and other things that, that technically could be considered public under the way the law is written, but figured, so it's restrictive, but it's not as restrictive as, as it possibly could have been under the, under the statute.
Mr. Mayor?
Or Jones?
So it's okay to use cannabis in my curtilage.
Correct.
What? Exactly. I read stuff. I know you guys don't think I read stuff.
Definition, yeah. Here you're around the home. Great.
Weird word.
Yeah. Word of the day.
Prove.
I'll second.
Public hearing?
Oh, public hearing?
Fine. I have a motion of second. At this time, we'll open it up for a public hearing. I don't have any names on my list. Only one's going twice, so I will close the public hearing. I have a motion of second. Any further discussion on this? Councilmember Edberg.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'd welcome some conversation at level of council about policy. I can see the argument about the intoxicating nature of alcohol and cannabis as being a reasonable way to say these are like items that should be treated likely, okay? Alike, not likely. So that makes intuitive sense to me, and we already pretty much prohibit that from, for, for alcohol, that's pretty much already covered, and I'm not immediately knowledgeable of any disparities there. From a, we've had pieces of this conversation over the past year about what's the appropriate treatment of tobacco and cannabis. And I don't recall that we've reached an agreement on that exactly. I don't know that we've articulated an official policy position about, you know, are they alike, are they different? And I recognize that all of our regulation about tobacco has been, we haven't had very good ordinances in the past, and that's been a more recent effort. And then the cannabis stuff got layered on top of that, because we chose to start examining tobacco, licensure and zoning and all that kind of stuff, reexamining that, actually before we had to deal with some of the other stuff. So I'd welcome some, some conversation about what is the right policy framework to use and why? So that we can be clear to ourselves and that we can be clear to citizens about what is and what is not permitted and why and why not, and that there's at least some kind of a statement on the record that says, yeah, we did talk about it, and this, this was the consensus of, of the policymakers at the time. So before we move to adopt or take action on the motion, I'd really welcome that kind of a perspective.
Councilmember Edberg, is it, is it your thought just generally that you want to be consistent, or are you suggesting that we should pass this and then bring the tobacco ordinance in parity and prohibit tobacco use in those spaces that we just prohibited cannabis use?
That's a great question, and that is indeed a part of what I'm wrestling with my, in my own mind. In general, I think there is a public purpose that is served by having consistency, that consistent approaches to regulated, use of regulated compounds makes enforcement, public understanding, public acquiescence, and acceptance more reasonably obtained when we have consistency. But how that consistency is defined and described, we haven't had that conversation. I could go either way, actually, Mayor, on, my, my preference is, I think, but again, we've not had that privilege of understanding each other's thoughts. My, my thinking is that they, that cannabis and tobacco should be regulated in the like ways. Now, we can achieve that, as you suggested in the second part of your question, we could achieve that by addressing that when we review and revise, adopt tobacco regulation. We could do it some other way here. I'm, I'm open to whatever works, but I think it would be wise for us to.
I'll layer in another distinction without taking the position, because I could be persuaded either way, and I'll ask the city attorney in a second. So it seems to me the distinction is, for example, with alcohol, well, is it prohibited? Is it not? Well, it's preempted by state law. That's correct. So the state law prohibits the use of alcohol in public spaces. Do I have that correct?
Mr. Mayor, yes, for the most part, correct. I was thinking, sometimes cities go a little bit further when it comes to their own property, parks and things like that.
Okay. So, and the reason I ask that is, and it sort of begs the question, and I don't think anybody has an answer, so it'd be speculation, we still have this yet unkind of evolved, fleshed-out rules surrounding cannabis, and I don't know, maybe that will be taken up by the state, and they'll decide to bring cannabis usage into parity with alcohol and prohibit it in public spaces, or not. So I would, my inclination is, because that kind of is a possibility, that I would be comfortable passing this because I support it, but recognize that there's some nuance there with tobacco and would want to kind of let things play out a little bit, because I do see that as a distinction. If the state policymakers say, well, it's an intoxicating liquor, it's an intoxicating substance, we're going to take the reins on that one, that's the distinction that I see. But I'll just throw it out there, I would also support prohibiting tobacco usage in the same places that we're prohibiting this. I don't see a big compelling public interest, and I don't foresee a lot of public outcry, and I would be fine with that. So those are my thoughts. Anyone else want to weigh in? Councilmember Jones.
I'm going to defer to Mr. Walsh. He had his hand up earlier, if that's okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones and Mr. Mayor. I'm more on the, along the lines of comparing cannabis to alcohol because of the, you know, mood-altering characteristics of the substances. So that's point one. But I think the broader point is we have, cannabis is new. It's new in Minnesota, it's new in White Bear Lake. We have no experience with how it's going to work. And so as a policymaker, I'm going to, I want to start slow. I mean, that's, and I think this, my comments will speak to both this item and then the item, new business, A, oh no, sorry, 7A, on our unfinished business. Start slow, I guess, because we have no experience. We have some other states that have done things, but we have no experience in Minnesota. So with the ordinance in front of us, the public place thing, I like the way it's written, public places generally, I don't anticipate our police, because they'll be the ones that will be enforcing this for the most part, out there as the cannabis police, looking for offenders. I don't think they have time to do that. I think they have more important things to do on a daily basis, but this gives them a tool in their toolbox, should there be a problem, should there be an issue, a nuisance, they have the ordinance in their back pocket they can use, they can either, they can just say, this is against the ordinance, you need to move along, go home, or they could even cite them and, you know, whatever the misdemeanor penalty is, if they think that would, that would be effective. So I think it's just new, we have no experience, how this is going to affect our city, the state, this is a good start to get this as a, you know, a tool in the toolbox for our police, and then we'll see how it goes. We, you know, I think we'll be back revisiting this. As to the state, I mean, at the moment, they have not regulated public place use, and I don't think the rulemaking process will allow them to do that, that's just my opinion. They would have to go back to the legislature to do that, I think. I think that's a little bit of a stretch for rulemaking, not to say that they won't do it in the next session, but at the moment, in front of us, we've got no regulation, so I think this, this is the right way to go.
Councilmember Jones.
I agree with Councilmember Walsh.
Yeah, it's the intoxicating substance. Why, without picking on the legislature too much, I just don't know why they don't align almost identically. It doesn't make sense, any of it, any of it, to me. It's like, it's an intoxicating substance, the police should be able to treat equal administration, equal residents. It's easier. As far as tobacco goes, that's not on this plate. Currently, they can legally do it. We haven't talked about that, so I think tobacco needs to come out of this conversation as far as public spaces. If we want to have that conversation, that needs to be separate. We have not, and it is, I mean, it's not, I don't hear anybody saying putting it in, but yeah, it just, it just makes sense to the residents, I think, in my opinion.
Councilmember Hughes.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Edberg, I think it's a fun conversation. I guess I find, I agree, I find marijuana usage, this usage, to be more in line with alcohol than I do tobacco. I think it'd be kind of, I think it would be kind of weird for us to say you can't smoke a cigarette while walking down the street. I'm sure somebody has done it, but I'm so used to seeing it in all of my life, I think it would be very difficult to do. Again, not undoable, but it would just be different, whereas I think it would also be equally as weird to see somebody smoking a joint as they walk down the street and have that be acceptable.
I have a motion of second. Any further discussion? Councilmember Edberg.
Yeah, I'm persuaded to support the proposal. Prove the right to re-raise this conversation when we get back to tobacco regulation and when we can have that public conversation about what's, what's good, right, and fair, and we can, we can deal with that then. But for tonight, I think this is fine. I appreciate sharing. Thank you.
Very good. All right. I have a motion of second to adopt the ordinance. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The ordinance is adopted. We have an accompanying resolution. I entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
A move.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution is adopted. All right, let's jump into item 6B, second reading of an ordinance amending the fee schedule. Ms. Crawford.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So we have a public hearing and a second reading. The city council recently adopted an ordinance licensing and imposing regulations on the sale of edible cannabinoid products. So our 2023 fee schedule does not list any fees related to edible cannabinoids, because they were not legal at that time when we adopted the fee schedule. So staff was directed to prepare, to amend the fee schedule for, to add edible cannabinoid products licensing and an application and background, as well as penalties for our administrative offenses for, for that ordinance. You did also just adopt momentarily ago, an ordinance prohibiting the use of cannabis products in public spaces. So in anticipation of you potentially doing that, we also added that as an option for the second reading. So also in the ordinance is administrative offenses for penalties for edible cannabinoids in public spaces. So this is a public hearing, and before you potentially adopt this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Can you just expound a little bit on how we arrived at these fees? Do the cities do them? Are they comparable to other things that we regulate and license? How do we get to these numbers?
Sure. So these fees, the fee structure is similar to tobacco products for their, those licenses and backgrounds. We had nothing to compare this to, so we believe that these fees would cover a reasonable amount of staff time to administer those license applications and run those background checks. This is, at least, the edible cannabinoid license and application is a temporary license that we will be offering, so that's going to be probably two rounds of that license if anyone applies. And we do revisit the fee schedule annually, so we have an opportunity to revisit these should they prove that they are not satisfactory.
All right, before we jump any further, this is a public hearing, so I will open up to the public on this issue. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. All right, council, any other further discussion on this? Councilmember Edberg.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, only in the spirit of English grammar, looking at the top of page 6B, where we say penalties for edible cannabinoid sales, then it's consumption in a public space. Are we regulating sales or consumption?
Sure. That is a typo in the staff report, and we can get that corrected in the fee schedule before it would be published. Thank you.
I'm totally on board with the, with consumption. I don't think we want to penalize sales, legally conducted sales.
On page, Mayor, Councilmember Edberg, on page one, it is related to sales. That is just a typo. We carried that table forward. We need to create a new table.
Thank you.
I entertain a motion to approve the ordinance adopting the fee schedule.
A move.
Second.
All right, motion of second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I also have an accompanying resolution. I thought we did for that one. And we're done with that. Let's move on. All right, item 7A, second reading of an ordinance amending a zoning regulation regarding tobacco and cannabis uses. Ms. Crawford or Mr. Lindahl.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Just to give you, since it's been a month since we held the first reading, I'll give you just a little bit of background here to set the context for your continued discussion on this item here tonight. So this is a zoning code text amendment related to tobacco shops and cannabis retailers. It was initiated by the city staff at the direction of the council. It seeks to create tobacco product shops and cannabis retail uses, and as presented in front of you, assigns them to the B4 General Business District. The planning commission conducted the required public hearing at their meeting on July 27th and had a very involved discussion about this item, raised a number of good questions that we, staff has, has covered in the ordinance since that time, and did recommend approval to the council. The city council, back on August 8th, conducted that first reading and then asked the council, or asked staff to bring this item back tonight for a second reading and action for review. Since the first reading back in, on August 8th, we did receive one comment from Solomon Hale, and I'm hoping I'm pronouncing your name correctly. And that email comment, or letter comment, is included in your packet. Mr. Hale is in the audience and can talk about that, his comments, if the council wishes when we get to that point. What, what staff wanted to highlight for you tonight is, you may remember from our first discussion, is there's actually two option ordinances included in your packet for your consideration, and we're going to go over the distinctions between those two here in the coming slides. During the initial first reading, we went into a little bit more, we went into detail, more detail about the analysis in the staff report and how we, staff came to the recommendation that's before you tonight. But what I would offer, just as probably the most important context, I think, again, for your discussion tonight, is we looked at each one of these criteria, and again, there's further analysis in your staff report, but we use this analysis to come to the recommendation before you tonight to place, to recommend placing these two items in the B4 district. And the reason that we did that was based on looking at the comprehensive plan and its guidance on where we would put commercial uses. It doesn't specifically address either one of these particular uses, but it does break down our commercial categories into really uses that, zoning districts that are primarily commercial, or other mixed-use districts like downtown or the Lake Village District that include a mix of uses, institutional and residential and civic uses. And so we use that guidance and the criteria related to the buffering for these particular uses to come up with a recommendation to recommend these would be in the B4 district. So, and that, and that recommendation also looked at the zoning and the uses, other uses considered in the B4, and attempted to treat them similarly to liquor sales. So option one, that's included in your packet, and both of these are included in your packet, and while there isn't an option one or option two at the top of the page for you, can note the first one before you is option one, and it's got the date at the top of 7/27, and then option two is the second one in your packet and includes that date of August 1st. So the differences here that highlight them for you is that option one was the original ordinance that was reviewed by the planning commission and part of that conversation that raised a number of issues that led us to option two, but it contains one definition for all cannabis businesses and limits them to the B4 General Business District. Option two, separate, includes separate definitions for cannabis businesses that would, should be thought of as full dispensaries, and then a second separate use that would allow edible cannabis businesses or sales of just edible cannabis products. And under option two, the edible cannabis businesses would remain limited to the B4. Edible cannabis businesses would be allowed in any commercial district throughout the city, at a business that also has a current tobacco on-sale or off-sale liquor license. And so again, trying to focus those edible products that you could buy similarly in a liquor store, or purchase at a bar or restaurant into other uses that would sell similar types of products. Under either option, the tobacco shop section of the ordinance stays the same, and the buffering standards also remain the same. So 1,000 feet from a school, or 500 feet from a daycare, a residential treatment facility, or a public park. So looking at the existing uses in town and how that would affect them, again, we have six existing tobacco product shops who are already existent under the current code that we have. Those become legal nonconforming, again, or what's commonly referred to as grandfathered. They're allowed under state statute to be repaired, maintained, even replaced, just not expanded, okay? So they would remain in place, subject to having the appropriate licensing. The low potency hemp product sales would become permitted as a result of either one of the options that's before you tonight. But full cannabis businesses would remain prohibited under the city's moratorium that comes through the state's statutes for cannabis use. So just quickly, again, to kind of remind you as to how we came to the situation where we developed an option one and option two, we reviewed a number of really good questions that were raised by the planning commission as they looked at this. And so we looked at, the first one really just had to do with whether the sports center city facility, ice arena would be considered as qualifying as a park under the ordinance, and it did. And even the map that you saw under the first reading reflected that. So then the zoning districts, they asked which zoning, they wanted to confirm what zoning districts were involved, were recommended for being included in this, and again, that is the B4 districts. And then they talked about, can nonconforming tobacco shops continue their operation, and yes, in compliance with the state's nonconforming standards? Existing tobacco shops, could they sell cannabis or low potency hemp products? And again, this comes down to really the primary difference between the two versions of the ordinance. Under option one, no, low potency hemp products would only be allowed in part of the one definition for cannabis businesses, so you, they would all be dispensary kind of things. Or under option two, they would be allowed in any commercial district for a business, again, that has a tobacco license or an on-sale or off-sale liquor license. And so looking at the zoning code, the zoning map, and seeing how that lays out in town, and these maps are also included in your packet if you'd like to see one, maybe that's a little bit closer view for you. We divided the city into two halves here, just to try and have a more readable slide here for you, but the white circles on this map indicate the three existing tobacco shops that are in the northern portion of the city, and then the red circles indicate the B4 zoning that's outside of the buffers that we just talked about. And then the red circles indicate the B four zoning that's outside of the buffers that we just talked about and would be eligible for dispensary, sorry, full cannabis businesses. And then that red arrow just indicates where we've added the buffer for the sports center. Similarly, moving to the south side of the city, you now see the three sites that happen to be located in the south side of the community, the corresponding buffers throughout that south side, and then the few locations where the B four zoning exists outside of that, of the recommended buffer areas. And so with that, staff includes, it does include a recommendation in your packet tonight that you adopt option two, which would provide the two separate uses, one for basically cannabis businesses that can be thought of as full dispensaries and then the low potency cannabis businesses that would allow edibles in a, as long as they also had a tobacco or on or off-sale license. And with that, I'd stand with questions.
Councilmember Jones?
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Lindahl, so, um, according to option two, so let me make sure I'm understanding, is full cannabis or dispensary basically the same language, correct? Full cannabis equals dispensary?
Correct.
Okay. After January 1st, the moratorium is listed, they would be able to? Or we're saying no from here on out, moratorium or not?
Any, under either version of the ordinance, full dispensaries could only apply for a license under the state laws and the city's moratorium after January 1 of 2025.
This is restricting dispensaries. It's just the zoning?
We're just doing zoning.
Correct.
It's the zoning.
Correct.
Okay. Which is B four.
Correct.
Thank you. Right. Yeah, sorry. Clarified everybody, only to allow them in B four.
So, so we're really just balancing current tobacco shops, right, to offer another product that's now authorized under the law? Or do we have an interest in saying, we want to heavily restrict where, where these products can be sold into exclusively the B four district?
Can I throw out a discussion item, Mr. Mayor?
Please do, yeah.
So, I certainly appreciate where staff and where planning commission is coming from. What scratches my head is based going back to our previous conversation, that we just had to try to treat these things the same. What is the difference between a dispensary and a store that sells off-sale liquor? And if someone can tell me the difference, I'll support the B four, but I can't support it because here I've got two locations, one for sure, that has had a liquor store within that strip mall forever, not forever, but for a very long time. And we're not going to, again, treat it the same. And somebody tell me the difference. And then also, I'm going to jump up to County Road F and Waipur Avenue. That, for decades, that had a liquor store, Deebles Liquor Store, right there. So, obviously it does not now, but it, it just scratches my head that we're going to be okay with having a liquor store. Same with, I believe, liquor stores currently not up in Birch Lake, but it was for a long, long time. So that's kind of my head scratcher here.
Mayor, members of the council, so, the, the way staff arrived at the recommendation for you tonight, was it, was our, a foundation of that consideration was taking previous direction from the council discussion and trying to find a way to treat these two kinds of uses the same. We did that in the context of looking at the comprehensive plan and the definitions related to our commercial uses in town. And there are, again, more details in your staff report. And then we compared that with the corresponding zoning districts that we tried to fit within the broader commercial land use categories. And so, if you look at our zoning districts, in B one, which is neighborhood commercial, it's designed for neighborhood-related uses, the B two is limited commercial and, and is basically neighborhood, seeks to have neighborhood sale kind of retail, serving the surrounding neighborhood, but allows for broader, more intense development. Okay? Basically parking lots and, and, and strip mall kind of development, not a limited scale. The B three district then moves up even to a more intense level and focuses on allowing auto-related kind of uses. So things that could include drive-throughs and that kind of thing, so, and, and car sales, and so more directly auto-related uses. And then the B four is more general and designed to include, to be, to include kind of all of the commercial uses under that, but include those uses that would serve beyond just the White Bear Lake community. Then we get to B five, that is a mixed-use category, includes residential and institutional and civic kinds of uses, and similarly, the Lake Village District does also that, includes mix of uses. So if you, if you look at how we currently categorize and try to organize zoning uses, the, only the B four doesn't include either the concept that you're right next to residential and serving that community, or you actually include a mix of uses within the zoning district. So B four is really the category that you're left with. And because in this case, the state law comes, comes with these buffering standards from these particular uses, residential treatment facilities, schools, parks and those kinds of things, that our zoning would allow, our, our neighborhood kind of smaller-scale zoning would allow to be next to those uses. It's not only the, sorry about that. So it's, it's not only trying to fit it in the appropriate zoning category as White Bear Lake currently organizes, organizes them, but it's also the idea that we're trying to fit that also within the standards that come from the state statute that include these buffers from basically what I'll describe as neighborhood-serving kind of retail.
Mr. Mayor, regarding those buffer, I mean, the one thing, and I understand them, I really do, and Mr. Lindahl, that was a very good answer, leading me to a second possible proposal in my mind, but it's the daycares. The daycares, they can pop up tomorrow. I could open up a daycare tomorrow, somebody's just about to apply for X and nope, you're out. I mean, but that's the buffer zone, not related to the B four. So I look at those going, that, that's hard, much, much harder to control. But I, I guess for my sense, because of the two locations that I'm specifically talking about, the council to say, again, I don't consider them different, we already have an alcohol store, I think it's highly, and it is not coming from staff or planning commission, trust me on that. I, I think it's almost hypocritical to allow a liquor store to continue to sell liquor when we have a shop. So it's kind of like in the back of my head, Lindy's going to kill me.
Don't move.
Play Let's Make a Deal with the Dais, is like, hey, can we grandfather this business in? And you've got one year to apply to that moratorium. If you want to sell cannabis, if not, you're out. I know. Okay, we can't do anything. I, I get it. Yeah, you can't, yeah.
Question? Well, how do we treat liquor, zone-wise liquor stores, liquor, off-sale liquor?
Mayor, mayor, members of the council, liquor stores are currently a permitted use in the B two, B three and B four zones. But again, the difference is liquor doesn't come along with a state statute that includes buffers from these other uses that can be next to those more neighborhood-serving kinds of commercial.
Mr. Mayor? Please, Mr. Gilchrist.
Just one quick note of clarification. The, the setbacks, the, the buffers that are in law are a may, not a must. So, you have discretion.
Look back into our ballpark.
Yep.
So, Mr. Mayor, um, I, I think I'm, I'm somewhere in between. I'm, I'm, it's confusing, it's difficult. So just where I stand, the cannabis retailers after the 25th, or after January 1, 2025, I'm comfortable with B four, zone B four. And so I feel like the, what you're bringing us in this resolution, the second version of the resolution is sort of, I don't know, on the one hand, on the other hand, or schizophrenic even. It's, you're saying, you're saying edibles B four, let's say cannabis edibles got to be zone B four, but if you want to co-locate that in a tobacco shop or a liquor store that happens to be grandfathered in outside of B four, that's okay. And then when you look at the map, if you bring your map back up, the south part of the, the district, the buffer zones are going to prevent that from happening anyway. If you look at the, I mean, the tobacco, one of us gets a County Road E and White Bear Avenue, the F, is that F or Cedar up there? F and White Bear Avenue, number two, so those are buffered out, right? It looks like the third one on the far right is going to be okay to be tobacco grandfathered in and allow edibles. So if you go to the north part of the map, I don't remember the northern, the northern half of the city. So there's one downtown that's okay, one across the highway, not okay, one south that is okay. So it's kind of, it's kind of like, yes, it's B four for edibles, but if you want to co-locate and sell in a tobacco place that's already got a grandfather, yes, you can do that, but we're going to buffer, so we're not going to allow it anyway. So I guess it comes back to me with the map and everything else that's going on, I'm, I'm comfortable with edibles B four, cannabis retailer B four, and frankly, tobacco B four, grandfathered in, obviously. So that's not on the table, though, that I don't really have that opportunity. I think I like, I like, well, maybe that's the original resolution then.
It's option one, isn't it?
Maybe that's option one.
Option one's the most restrictive?
Yeah, maybe that's, maybe I like option one, maybe that's not.
Mayor, members of the council, option one is the most restrictive, but option one only includes one definition. So basically to sell any level of cannabis, you would have to be a full-blown dispensary. So that, that would exclude restaurants from selling a, you know, a drink that would include it. It would, it would prohibit liquor stores from, from being able to sell a kind of drink that you could consume, that a cider kind of drink. It would.
Infused. Infused with, with THC.
Yes.
Yeah. So that's, that's the reason.
So option two separates those uses and would allow you, would allow edible products to be sold by existing restaurants, existing liquor stores, or anyone else who has an existing tobacco license. So you, you would, those tobacco stores would be able to sell those edible products as well. So really, it's, the, the structure here, if we, if I can try to make this as in its simplest form, is option one puts everything in one category and limits it to a few spaces with the buffers in the B four. Option two would allow, would still limit the full-blown dispensaries to the same zones and the same, with the same buffer applied to them. But it would allow edible products to be sold in any commercial zone as long as you also have a tobacco license or an on-sale or off-sale liquor license.
And without the setbacks.
And without the setbacks.
That's the point.
Okay, so the buffer is, was not, not part of, I should erase that from my comment.
Option two drops the buff, buffer for edibles.
All buffers?
Correct.
So, yeah, this is difficult. This is, it's not, it's not, it's not simple. I mean, I, I don't know, we're policymakers, so we get to make these decisions, I guess, and I get to, I get to talk about my preferences. I'm less concerned about drinkables than I am about edibles, you know? So I was thinking edible, 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 but now we're, you reminded me of the new products available in a liquor store, on the shelf, and in a bar, that, you know, infused, okay? I'm less concerned about that. I don't know, I can try to explain logically why, I mean, I just, I'm less, in the, in the auspices of a, of a liquor store, under the rules and regulations they already have on a bar with a dram shop and everything else that they're, you know, serving and over-serving, I'm less concerned about that. A tobacco store selling edibles, now we, now we have more edibles. Now we have more opportunities to sell edibles, especially without the buffer, now those are more prevalent all over the city, potentially. So that, I almost want to distinguish between edibles and, or bars and liquor stores and tobacco shops. That might be a third way in here. And I, and I, just on the other broader point, before I hand back the microphone, I did, I'm comfortable with B four for cannabis retailers, I'm comfortable with the logic of the staff in terms of, you know, making it a destination to go, to go to that type of a location, instead of having it in the neighborhood, you know, right there, like the ice cream shop down the street in my neighborhood here. So I, I'm comfortable with B four for the cannabis retailer, for sure. I'm still struggling with edibles. And I, that's all I have for now.
Let me try and take a stab at making sense of that. I, I think I share a lot of what Councilmember Walsh said. My concern is, I want to, I want to, I want to take this slow. I think at the end of the day, edibles probably are going to be pretty expansive, whether it's at tobacco shops or liquor, whatever it is. Having said that, I, I'm less concerned about a slower, a slowing, I'm less concerned about businesses saying, well, you jipped me out of six months or a year of being able to sell edibles and us getting there, once we figure out how this whole thing is going to look. Once we have a regulatory structure from the state, once we have some more guardrails on it, I think we ultimately get there. I share Councilmember Walsh's concern. I think there is a distinction between if you're already selling, especially onsite intoxicating liquors, that's different than just being able to get edibles at any place that might also sell cigarettes. A gas station, for example, has a tobacco license. Well, now you can get the edibles at a gas station. As, as a matter of public policy, I don't like that. I don't like how, how readily available it is. I think it can, I think there's a middle ground. The full-blown dispensary should be a couple in the city, it's a, it's a destination, that's it, and then we kind of roll it out slower. So I don't know how we, how we tackle that, but from a policy standpoint, it's, to me, option two goes too far. It's too expansive, at least out of the gate, and, and we'll see if we get there in a year or two. That's, that's where my head is, and I'm not proposing specific language, but that's sort of the in-between approach that I think, as a matter of policy, we should take. Other thoughts on that? Councilmember Edberg?
All right. So admittedly, this topic has got all kinds of tails and, and arms and permutations that makes categorization a straightforward, a simple process. When we address public use, public consumption, the argument that was articulated here and that I support is that because of its intoxicating nature, we should regulate cannabis comparable to alcohol. When it comes to zoning, we're going to compare cannabis to tobacco. And so the question about, so what is the fundamental difference between the off-sale use of, sale of alcohol and the use of cannabis? Why are we not making comparisons? You know, if our interest is in having systems and structures, rules, processes, procedures in place that relate to consumption of intoxicating substances, it seems that our zoning ought not care about tobacco. We ought to be looking for consistency of the intoxicating substances, which would mean the zoning for cannabinoids should be comparable to alcohol and that tobacco is the extraneous. Now, okay, that's, I like consistency and I like the general idea that sauce for the goose is sauce for the gander, that we try and align, like things are treated alike, all right? And I kind of like that. Now, there's also consistency is the bugaboo of small minds. Okay, fine, maybe my brain is pea-sized, that's completely. Okay, fine, maybe my brain is pea-sized, that's completely possible. My point is, we got all kinds of moving parts here, but I'm trying to reconcile this fundamental, are we regulating an intoxicant, or are we regulating items that are smoked? Okay? And, and I don't think we have congruity there, and that annoys my brain. It doesn't have to annoy me, but it annoys my brain. All right? So I'll just say that, and then I'm, let me set that aside for the moment. I like the idea that the edibles, the option, availability under option two and distinguishing edibles from the full leaf, the smokeable, the, all of the full range of other products, it actually makes sense to me that we can regulate those two differently, that allowing the sale of edibles in the same places as we have both the intoxicants as well as the, as tobacco, okay? The thing that makes that sense to me from that perspective is that all of those establishments are subject to regulation, comparable kinds of regulation. We, we regulate, we send in minors to, to test whether they are abiding by sales, that we have systems in place and that are, have been used, and we had one business that had to come in front of us because they failed a test, all right? And they, they're taking that seriously, great. But we have systems that we can use to regulate, and I like that. I, I, I don't want a Wild West, I want responsible use. And I, I am not objecting to the idea of reasonable regulation, but it's like finding what is a comparable and reasonable regulation strikes me as being our job, and figuring that out is where some of our, some of our challenges are. I have other questions, I'll, let me just throw, I'll throw two of them out, and we can talk about them later, they aren't, all right. Looking at the buffers.
Ah, thank you. I'm sorry, that was unintentional.
Thousands of people watching at home.
Ah, right. So, actually, Mr. Lindell, thank you, and we can flash back and forth. From an economic perspective, our decisions, particularly around buffering, are going to create economic incentive for a relatively few number of parcels that can be, where items can be sold. And it will almost certainly create tensions within single units of property where part of the property falls within a buffered area and part does not, all right? So if you picture, you can picture almost any of them, there's several in my mind along County Road E where we have a part of a, of a strip mall, and in certain places it would be outside the buffer, and in other places it's inside the buffer. Hmm. And how, what kind of a land rush does that create among landlords and potential tenants to locate and get dibs on a piece of real estate that happens to be six inches, six feet, 16 feet, whatever that is, outside the buffer, because then it would be legal? And so part of me also then says, I want to find out, I actually have trouble with, I'm not colorblind, but I have trouble on this map with how many different shades of red, magenta, maroon, whatever we're going to call them. I tried to figure out, so if I were an entrepreneur that wanted to establish a legally cited business under our proposed ordinance, how many choices do I have to choose from? In the, and especially if it's limited to the B4, all right? So anyway, those are the kinds of other unintended consequences, maybe intended, I, I'm kind of guessing not, but that becomes part and parcel of what we are creating and the dynamic that will come into effect afterward. Last one I'll throw out, Mr. Jones already alluded to it. So, okay, we establish a map, and somebody decides to establish a daycare, all right? Recognizing that the states, the state gives us permission to establish buffers, but does not mandate, so we have control over, and, and we have maximums on the maximum buffer, we could choose tighter buffers, should we so choose. I don't, I'm not faulting administration for using the maximums, I think that's totally fine, but there's at least some argument about the, okay, now we have these established businesses and somebody decides to open up a daycare, and it happens to be within X number of feet, and blah, 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 and then that raises all kinds of other, how do we regulate like, like people alike, blah, blah, blah. So those are the kinds of things, and I don't have a single solution, a nice box for all of those.
Councilmember Jones.
Well, since I only have six meetings left, I might as well just throw monkey wrenches all over. So question, so why does, with the moratorium, with the state not having all the pieces to the puzzle yet, why do we need to make this decision right now? That's question number one. So if you want to go ahead and say, let's move forward on this, and say, yes, I, I'm going to say, okay, we've got a lot of opportunities, a lot of restrictions, a lot of might-haves, maybe we don't have to pay attention to this or that. How about we do this? You guys ready? Let's have our own dispensary, city-owned. We take away what Mr. Edberg just brought up of, you know, certain places, and I don't know if Ms. Crawford's eyes are popping out of her head right now, but I also know that she also ran for her previous position in Mora, they had their city-owned liquor store, correct? Other, I mean, much larger, I believe Apple Valley also does the same thing, much larger. I believe Lakeville does, too.
We can talk about it further if you want. That's a hard no for me. I don't want the city to be in that business. It's just a hard no for me. So if you want to talk about, if other in the council want to talk about it, but I don't know if that's a topic that's worth spending a great deal of time on.
Well, and it leads me to say, at least, okay, Mr. Mayor, and I respect that. I, I do get that it's a whole different, but it's not unusual. It is a revenue source, we're looking for revenue, especially this year and the next.
Are you sure?
But I'm just saying, six months from now, it's like, do we need to make the decision now? Should we wait till after the legislature gets done with their session next year, if any more pieces get thrown on the fire, or removed, or changed, or altered? That's my question.
So, I mean, the city attorney can enlighten us, so if we don't do anything, the, what happens?
So, Mr. Mayor. And counsel, for now, I think it really is important to think about these as, as two different types of uses. The cannabis business, the, call it the dispensary, selling the green stuff, versus the edibles, the, the drinks and the, and the gummies and that sort of thing. The, the, what I'll just lump as edibles can be sold now in, in the city, and so I think part of the reason behind this, behind looking at this was, where do we want these to be sold? And, and if you recall, you, you adopted the licensing ordinance that ties them to tobacco and liquor, and so that's kind of the route we went here. Frankly, when I put the original ordinance together, my fault for not thinking of the distinction between the, the two and lumping them all together, and Lindy caught that and said, oh, that we really don't want to treat them exactly the same, and that's where we kind of came up with the second one. And I, and I think part of the reason behind treating them separately, and why that makes sense, the more I looked at this, is remember that when the full cannabis, the retailers, the dispensaries come about, they're going to be subject to your limitation on numbers if you want to go down that route, whereas the edible businesses are not. So that's another reason to treat them separately. So taking all that together, is there a rush to do zoning on the dispensaries? No, you're under a moratorium until January of, of 2025, so, I mean, there's, one of these are not going to be springing up next month in the city or next year. The other ones will. I mean, you're gearing up for licensing these things, and so I, I think you, at a minimum, ought to, as a city, get your arms around where you want those to be sold. And right now, with the licensing ordinance, you steered it towards tobacco and liquor stores, and so it seems for consistency's sake that to the extent you zone them, you know, that's why we focus on those two types of uses for the sales of edibles.
Ms. Crawford.
Thank you. In addition to city attorney, I'm oversimplifying this, but I am looking at full-blown cannabis as full-blown liquor, and the edibles as 3-2. Right? So you can sell 3-2 in other places that is not a liquor store, and a dispensary is the full liquor store. I also want you to remember we're discussing tobacco zoning as well, that is also in this. If you choose not to zone cannabis, I'd still strongly suggest that you begin to zone tobacco.
Mayor, members of the council. Just again, to, to try and give you just a little bit more context and to try to answer Councilmember Edberg's question. So typically, the way zoning works is for a piece of property, if you're in the buffer, if you're an inch in, you're all in. So inch into a property, it covers the whole strip mall or the whole business, it's not, if one end of the business is outside of that particular buffer, then you're not subject to the buffer. It's, an inch in is all in for a particular property. Also, the typical way that we administer zoning, and I'll admit this is more challenging for the administrators of the zoning, is that if a business came in subject to the buffer, and they didn't fit in the buffer, we would say no to that tobacco business or to that liquor store, or to, I'm sorry, to that dispensary. But in the reverse, if the dispensary was already established and within the buffer area a daycare came in, their traditional administration of zoning would say that use would be allowed to go in that space, and it wouldn't affect the status of the existing dispensary. It becomes more challenging to administer and to track, but, you know, that's part of what we do.
Mr. Mayor.
Member Walsh.
So getting back to some of the points Councilmember Edberg raised a while ago, and I wish, I wish I'd have jumped in earlier because I've forgotten most of them, but I, I think I agree with you on the treatment of alcohol and full-blown cannabis equally. I guess, I wonder if we bifurcate it even further, though. I mean, you've got, you've got two types of alcohol sales in a city like White Bear Lake, you've got on-sale and off-sale, you know? So, so I, I would be willing to say, you know, let's make, in this resolution, we can make liquor also subject to B4 zoning. I think the logic is the same. I think it's, it's destination, you go to purchase it, and it can be buffered from the neighborhood, you know, different than the ice cream shop where it's right in the neighborhood, we can walk up and get some ice cream. I think the, the bar, the liquor store certainly could be that way. The question, and one question I have is, you know, what is, and again, we could do that, all of, all of the bars and liquor stores being grandfathered in, it wouldn't have a huge effect immediately, but I think there's logic there, and I, I think the consistency is the same. I think if we were writing this from scratch, we'd treat them the same, but cannabis is new, and alcohol's been around forever, so that's why there's going to be inconsistency if we choose that. But I, I'm open to saying, yeah, liquor is now B4, and, but everything's grandfathered in, and we'll go from there. The question is, you know, what's the future of cannabis? I can go to a bar and order a drink and have a drink, is, are we going to, I don't think, I think it's allowed in the statute, I can't remember. Actually, I don't think it's allowed in statute. We can't have a, we can't go and smoke marijuana in a location, you know? I don't think that's allowed. There's events, there's marijuana events, and they kind of get close, but I don't think they went as far as to say, like, I can go to the bar and get a Guinness, I can't go to the bar and have cannabis and enjoy it together. I think I'm right on that. Do you remember the, what's in the state law? Allowed?
Mr. Mayor, do you mean smoking it or drinking it?
Well, not, not drinking a THC-infused product. I mean, that's, that's more the edible.
Because that you can do at a bar on tap, I mean, that's.
I'm talking about a cannabis dispensary where we can go and, and use the product in that retail location. I don't think the law allowed that use, and so that's where we kind of get stuck here, a little bit comparing the two, because now I can compare a liquor store to a dispensary, but I can't compare a bar to anything because we don't have it.
But isn't that smoking prohibited indoors, done? I mean, doesn't that just Trump All Clean Air Act?
Probably, yep. Yep, yep. But I'm, I'm saying, for the purposes of the zoning, again, back to the zoning, I, I'm kind of with Councilmember Edberg on consistency, but if you do, I don't know if we have to, if we have to slice and dice another layer then, and treat bars different than, than liquor stores. I don't know if I want to do that, that gets awfully confusing. So I, I don't know, I'd be open to be, making liquor B4 today, understanding the grandfather situation. You know, in my opinion, resolution.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you a question? Specifically, off-sale, you're talking liquor store, B4 zoning.
Well, yeah, I guess, good question. The, the part that's most comparable to a dispensary would be the liquor store. That gets really difficult, though. It gets, it raises problems because there, we have, we have establishments now that do both, right? Or do we? In White Bear Lake, do we have on-off sale? Do we have anybody that can sell off-sale?
Well, 3-2.
Only 3-2?
But they can't drink.
A bar can right now sell 3-2 if they have the license to do so.
Is that even a thing anymore?
Yes.
I mean, are they still selling 3-2 liquor?
Some gas stations now have it.
Last state in the country doing that.
Perhaps.
I think that's going to go away sooner rather than later. Resolution two, with, I think with a very simple amendment, I got to remember back where we were on this now, but if you look at resolution two, page three, subdivision three, the, the, the draft dated August 1, 2023, page three, subdivision three, edible cannabis business, cannabinoid business. If you strike in that last sentence, this, this code provided, the business also has, you strike a current tobacco license and leave on-sale or off-sale intoxicating liquor license, that allows the drinkable without the edible to be sort of co-located around town. That limits the amount of edibles, THC edibles that are going to be sold in tobacco shops, but allows the THC-infused products to be sold in bars and liquor stores. I'm more comfortable with, with a resolution with that distinction being made.
So.
And I don't know if there's another place in the resolution we have to change.
Can you?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. In the ordinance. The draft two, so your draft eight, eight, one.
Page three.
Page three, subdivision three, strike, a current tobacco license or, then I would just read, also has a current on-sale or off-sale intoxicating liquor license. So the edible cannabinoids can be sold all over town, outside of B4, grandfathered in, as long as it's a liquor store, you know, the liquor's license, not the, not the tobacco license. It limits it.
I like the idea. I'll ask your city attorney, and if you need to take a minute to think about that. So the point is, Councilmember Walsh is, like you said, just to reiterate, you can sell the, the edibles where you sell alcohol, whether it's consumed onsite or off-sale, right? You can purchase those there, but not if you have a tobacco, not just because you have a tobacco license.
Right.
Yeah.
But those are the ones.
Mr. Mayor and counsel, the licensing ordinance defines edible business, edible, eligible business, I'm sorry, eligible business. In order to get a license in the city, you have to either have a tobacco license or liquor license. And so then if we go over to zoning, to say, where, okay, I want to get a license, I'm eligible because I have a tobacco license, but then I go to zoning, I guess I'm not clear on what that means for me if I just have a tobacco license, if, if it doesn't say anything about me.
But we can amend our, our licensing statute, right? I mean, I know we just passed that, but we're, we're also still trying to grapple with all this stuff and figure it all out, so if someone, if there's an expert out there that just has a perfect roadmap for how to figure this out, we'll retain him, but.
So we could always. Just to clear, be clear, I'm not clear. So we've already allowed tobacco-licensed locations in, in White Bear Lake to sell edible cannabinoid products.
They're eligible. To obtain a license to sell, yes, along with liquor establishments.
It's already been crossed. I mean, we can re-cross it.
Right, there's, right now, there's no zoning.
Right. It's, it.
Just like. Just like tobacco, there's no zoning for tobacco currently in the city.
But we haven't actually put that licensing structure in...
We have.
No, no, no. Okay, let me finish the statement. We passed the, has anyone applied? Have we been issuing the licenses?
They have not applied. They are eligible to apply yesterday.
Right, I understand that. So we can still amend that if the policy goal is to limit the sale of edibles to liquor stores or onsite consumption, and not tobacco shops, is my point. Am I incorrect in that?
So we're saying, so America, whatever they call it today, I'm selling smokes, I'm selling three-two beer, Bill's getting his cigarettos down there. We're not going to allow them to sell edibles.
We are now.
I know that, that's, that's why I'm clarifying.
And the three-two beers was confusing me, so they have an on-sale or off-sale liquor license, then?
So only three-two beer. Almost every convenience store, C-store has that.
And it comes down to what our definition of a liquor license is for off...
Mr. Mayor, I mean, with that said, that's where I'm jumping back onto, Ms. Crawford's, it's like, edibles is three-two. It's three-two beer, it's already out there, I can buy it at Quick Trip, I can buy it at Speedway, I can buy it wherever. It's already there. Full alcohol is full dispensary, that's, that's a different, that's a liquor store. I don't even want to, I'm just trying to take bar out of the question, because we don't have an on-off sale establishment right now. So bar restaurant, bar restaurant, that's not part of this equation, it's liquor store. It's same, same to me, and a full-sale dispensary, to me, is the same thing as a liquor store. And to sit there and, so what I'm questioning councils is like, if you've got a problem that you're, you know, it's legal now, it all, it's, to me, it's the same thing. I wish we could just say, you know, only liquor stores can sell this stuff because they're trained to do this, that, but I'm not going there. I'm just like, do we, do you have, do we have as a council have a problem with that? Because I personally don't. I would look at a full-sale dispensary, the same thing as a off-sale liquor store. It's the same thing. Should be regulated as closely the same, should be zoned, Bill, like when you said, that's why I wanted to clarify what you're talking about, on-off sale. With the liquor store, I totally agree with that. So future, right, everybody's grandfathered in, future liquor stores would be required to conform to the same zoning as dispensaries. That makes a lot of sense to me.
I mean, I get that in terms of a liquor store and dispensary being the same. I'm not sure, I'm not sure I buy the argument of the edibles are the same as three-two. I don't, I don't see the distinction, if for no other reason, we just don't know yet. I mean, I just, we know, we know, we've had beer for a long time, we know what three-two beer is, it's a little bit less alcohol content. I don't feel educated enough.
Mayor, that is exactly the premise with lower potency hemp products. They are lower potency than your cannabis, your marijuana.
Right. And we, hang on, and we, and we, as a city, when trying to enforce our own ordinance, couldn't make heads or tails about how much THC was actually in the edible. I'm confident that a gas station selling three-two beer, that it has a 3.2 alcohol content by volume, because we have the systems in place to check that. I got zero confidence from anybody who is supposed to be testing and an expert in this, that if you're selling three-milligram edibles, that there might have been 20 milligrams in it. So as a matter of public policy, there is a very significant difference between three-two beer and edibles. That's my argument. And I'm not saying, like I said earlier, that we don't eventually get there, I'm just saying, I'm going to take the slow-roll approach and say, I'm going to err on the side of, I want to restrict it quite a bit until I know, until I know more, until the regulatory structures are in place. I think that's just a fundamental policy argument that I have. And then we back into, how do we set it up from a zoning standpoint? So what Councilmember Walsh's proposal was for striking the language, a current tobacco license or, so that it would only apply to on-sale and off-sale liquor licenses, I like, I understand that we have an issue with, we've already passed the licensing structure. We can amend that. And is it silly because we just passed it? Yeah, a little bit, but we're all trying to figure this out, so I don't have a problem going back and amending that, because with each debate, we get a little bit smarter, and we figure out what we want our city to look like, and nobody's got a crystal ball about how this is going to work, so we're going to cobble our way through. That's the direction that I see this going, that's where I'd like to see it going. I'm Robert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Observation on process. Two observations on process. So we are in a storming phase of our conversation, okay? We are not yet even at the norming, let alone, God forbid, forming. I appreciate Member Walsh's articulation of his preferences, but right now, as just observing, we haven't had a discussion about whether we like option one versus two, let alone an amendment to a subsection of number two. So there might be some, there might be a way for us to whittle our way down, do we like one or two, and then, based on that choice, then let's sort out, as opposed to jumping right to subsection three of number two. We don't have a motion on the floor yet, I'm just saying how to guide the conversation.
No, no, I understand that, yeah, but we have, and we haven't been as poignant as to say, well, I just said all this, and therefore I don't like option two, but everything I just said means I don't like option two. So that's, that's the clarifying point.
Got it. I like option two.
I understand, yeah, so that helps steer it.
I mean, that's the turmoil, or the stuff that's up in the air. The second thing is, so we've, there are so many interconnected conversations going on, that I would be really loath to want to make a, I have no confidence that we would get, if we took action tonight, that we would get all the stuff in place at one time. So I'm suggesting we kind of use this conversation to shape what's going to be the next conversation, so that in between now and then, we can have a discussion about the connection between licensing and zoning, and all of the other stuff, and the multiple ways that this thing interplays. I don't know that this is ripe for a whole lot of convers, a whole lot of decision-making tonight, but maybe, and I'm just one voice.
Mr. Gilchrist.
So, Mr. Mayor and council, a thought on an option, certainly not advocating this, but it occurred to me, if the council is not comfortable moving forward on zoning on cannabis businesses at this point, you could consider moving forward with frankly either one, and just taking article two out. That's the cannabis piece, because as the city manager mentioned, you really do have a gap right now when it comes to tobacco zoning, so that way, that could at least move forward and get adopted. I think the practical effect of doing that is that, okay, you still have your licensing ordinance, and so there's somewhat indirect zoning in application, because if, either I have a current tobacco license or a current intoxicating liquor license, which means then I'm eligible to get an edible license. So I'm either already established as one of those two businesses, then I could come in and get a license. If I want to establish a new business that says, sells edibles, I would have to get a tobacco license or intoxicating liquor license, both of which would be subject, if, once this gets adopted, to its own zoning restrictions. So you would indirectly have zoning restrictions applicable to the edible businesses, even if you take that section out today. And then that would give you some opportunity to further talk about this, and see if you either want to wait until the state comes through on zoning on this on a bigger scale, or if you want to adopt something more specific on edibles now and wait on the, so I would just hate to have the tobacco piece of this get swallowed up in the understandable confusion and debate around cannabis.
Just as a, so I understand, so let's just say we do that, because I think that makes, that makes good sense. My only concern, then, is, does it hinder our ability to regulate the cannabinoids in the future? Does this, because we have the moratorium that's expiring, what, if anything, does that do? Because I'm, I get that, I just, I don't, I want to make sure no action we take tonight doesn't hinder our ability to create grandfathering for someone else, and hinder our ability to regulate it if we decide to take it up at the next council meeting or in October.
When's the moratorium up?
2025, January 1st.
No, no, this is edible, this month, right? It's this month.
Well, specifically, September 30th, October 1, 2023. So we would conceivably have one more meeting if, but then after that...
September 27.
September 27. 27, you're right, yep.
So, Mr. Mayor, to answer your question, I think moving forward, licensing without zoning would potentially create a grandfathering issue.
That's my point. Yeah, so that's my point. So, so doing nothing, we have that issue, we have the ability to table this and take it up at the next meeting, subject to amendments, once we figure out what we might want to do. True statement. So then we need to know, like, absolutely, when does the moratorium end, and is that, in fact, after our second council meeting in September? Have we confirmed that?
September 27.
September 27. Meeting's on 26th.
26, 27?
Okay. Councilmember Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm all confused again. I live in confusion. We passed that tobacco ordinance last, two weeks ago, or whatever, creating tobacco licenses, where you could sell edibles.
Yeah.
Does that include the freedom? Do they become a tobacco shop under the tobacco licensing? So you can't sell edibles under our own licensing at freedom?
You can have a tobacco license, they wouldn't, Speedway would not be a tobacco product shop, an exclusive tobacco product shop.
So they would have a license, but they wouldn't be a tobacco product shop?
Right.
They could sell edibles, though, correct? They have a tobacco license, they could sell edibles.
Yes.
Yeah. That's the answer to your question. There's the, it's the distinction between a tobacco...
Why are we prepared if there was a tobacco shop, then? If it was all about tobacco licensing? What did we...
Right now, we do not zone tobacco, and we just created a tobacco product shop definition under licensing. We do not zone tobacco product shops at all. It has become an issue, they have popped up in places that perhaps the city council, city administration may not wish to see them. So we would like to zone them, I strongly recommend that you do move forward on that piece.
We already did it, right?
Not for zoning.
With licensing.
Oh, licensing.
And we're not talking about the ability to sell tobacco products, we're talking about a tobacco shop.
Yes.
No, I'm clarifying for Councilmember Hughes, yeah.
So back to the broader discussion, Mr. Mayor, if I could, resolution one, resolution two, I mean, resolution one, I like resolution one except for one problem, and it's that drinkable issue. If we do resolution one, my read into this, bars and liquor stores wouldn't be able to sell or provide for sale THC-infused drinks. I think that's a mistake in the market in Minnesota. I think we would be an outlier, I think our bars and restaurants would be upset, I think that'd be a mistake. So resolution one is difficult because it's very strict in there, and I like the strictness of it generally, but that's a little bit of a problem. And so I think it might be really hard, as I'm sitting here listening to everything, to do what I want to do, which is to sort of separate the edibles from the drinkables on the low-dose product line. It might be, might be too difficult. I like the delay, it would give us a shot to really work on that. I mean, I'm not against going back to the licensing question, I don't know if we have the votes to go back to the licensing question, you know? We don't, we don't, don't know. So that's, I mean, I'm open to that, obviously, because then we could sort of parse them out and treat them differently. You know, option two, by the way, you know, we licensed them, we said, hey, you can sell edibles, THC edibles at tobacco-licensed places, but then if, you know, then you come in with resolution one, but you can't, you can't actually, it doesn't work, because you can't actually zone anywhere in the, in the city. So it's like, it's unworkable, you know, that way. So we can say, yeah, you can do it, but then this, this doesn't allow it at all. This allows it, resolution two allows it, again, without the buffer, and in my opinion, allows it too much, so I don't know, it's difficult, this is difficult, I might not, might not be able to do it. Just, maybe just a philosophical note, too, just to be completely open and honest about where I come from, I don't like cannabis as a product to be sold in the city of Whiteboro Lake. I don't like the new law, I don't like that it's legal. I believe it's dangerous, I believe it's going to be bad for our citizens, bad for our youth, and I want to try to restrict it as much as I possibly can under the law. So just so everybody knows where I'm coming from, Councilmember Edberg, you were really approaching this from a business perspective, like, how do we zone a business? And I think you're not distinguishing that, and that's your right to do, I mean, you can absolutely treat it as any other business. I'm treating it a little bit, I'm treating it differently than selling widgets, or car parts, or ice cream. So I was kind of sympathetic to your, you know, the business case for, you know, you're talking earlier about you're going to create these opportunity zones, and there's going to, you know, you're going to, markets going, in a normal business way, I'd agree with you, we should really try to stay out of that, but I come from a, from a different perspective, from a public safety perspective, from a mental health perspective. So I just want to say that as we begin, kind of begin this conversation, because we're going to talk about this for another year or so, I think, as we do the whole ordinance on the dispensaries, so, thank you.
Councilmember Edberg.
Thank you. So, three points. So, Member Walsh, I think there is an issue that you are entitled to your views on the relative harmfulness of cannabinoids or THC relative to the well-documented, well-known choices for alcohol and tobacco that are, the social costs are humongous, massive, beyond incredible, and you are not willing to take on those established vices with known, documented, huge dollar signs. And my point, I'm willing to say, that it is a matter of personal choice for adults to make choices about what compounds they choose to use, and that the experience of 26 other states is that this is not worse than the two god-awful vices we already permit, we advertise, they sponsor our football teams and everything else. And so to say that there is something unique about here, about one of these choices that is not already well-known and documented about the other two, I think is not responsible. But you're entitled to that view. So I'm just saying, that's where my, I come from, in addition to the second point. So, Mayor, I respect, and I really appreciate the idea about we are shaping what our community wants to look like. Our community has very porous borders, and so to drive into Maplewood, to drive down the road to St. Paul, if we prohibit, we, there is a competitive aspect to this. Fine, we don't have to allow any kind of business, but there is a sense that the state of Minnesota, the citizens of the state acted on by their legislature, said this product is a legal product, and we should honor that. Now, what pays, I'm okay with that, it's like, fine, we can have that pay, but to pretend that by not regulating, offering for sale and regulating the use of legal compounds that are legal elsewhere, that we're somehow protecting our citizenry and protecting our community, I guess I haven't figured out exactly what that means or what that looks like, but that could be another conversation. The third point, I actually like very much the suggestion from our city attorney that we take cannabis, the dispensary conversation, kick that down the road, that doesn't need to be a part of our near-term conversation. I think there is indeed a lot of other clarification that will come, or not, and we'll still be back at the same place, but that's fine, at least we'll, we'll have to interrogate. But to take action on the legal sale of edibles in a variety of places, they're going to be all over the place, whether we permit them or not, our citizens are going to have access to them, and it'll be about a mile down the road. So it's like, to try and think that we can legitimately slow the access to edibles by our zoning process strikes me as not realistic.
Quick rebuttal, Mr. Mayor, please. Well, just, I mean, I don't want to, we don't want to argue too much on the broader policy, but I disagree with the characterization of the 26 other states. I think the experience has been really damaging. I do agree that, that we, you know, if you want to help take on alcohol and, and all the, the ills that come with that, as a city, you know, that's great. But this is in front of us today. This is new. It's what's new. The alcohol issue has been around forever, and it's, it's here with us. And I don't disagree with you. I don't think I'm hypocritical for saying, let's not take something that's really bad in alcohol and tobacco use and unhealthy, and, and then, and then say, well, it's really bad, so therefore we'll add to it. So what we're doing is we're adding to it today with, with cannabis. That's the answer. We can actually, well, we can't do much. I agree with you on that. We can't do much. And then the last point, just, just, you're right. You know, they go to Maplewood and get it. But we, in the zoning conversation we're having today, that's really, that's really, we are making decisions about White Bear Lake. That's all we can control. And so we can make decisions on what it's, what's for sale, what's available, what's happening in our city. That's all we can control, and that's, and we have that in front of us. The state did give us these zoning decisions to make. So that's what we're talking about. I don't disagree with you. From a, from a availability perspective, you're right. But, but from a community perspective, who we are, what we're known for, what we sell, what we have here, that's what, that's what we can decide. That's, that's still in our purview.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, rebuttal quick?
Yes, then we'll wrap up the general policy debate and look at the.
So I would simply note, in addition to the well-documented costs of alcohol and tobacco, we still allow adults to make choices about what they choose, how they choose to lead their lives. You, Mr. Walsh, are embodiment of an argument about personal freedoms. That's all over your historical argument. And if we want to know where that actually takes us, we can look at the period of prohibition in American history and know where that takes us. I suspect that if we, if we actually wanted to apply the lessons that we learned in this country 100 years ago, it's not moving in the direction that you're suggesting.
Councilmember Jones.
I'm going to make a motion.
Thank you.
I'm going to take the city manager or city attorney's advice and go with number two. I'll flat-out fight any number one, removing Article II, and let the rest wait. But with that motion, I'll just say, I will fight, I just think it's unbelievably hypocritical that when we get to the cannabis aspect, that we allow, in the same strip mall, a liquor store to be open and a cannabis dispensary, whatever you want to call it, to not exist. I would look to grandfather that one in, because I think it's unbelievably hypocritical. So, but not part of this conversation. There's my motion.
Point of clarification from the city attorney. So, I don't know logistically how to do this, but this was the second reading, and if we need to make a decision on it, on the, if, on the other aspects next week, how do, we can't just.
Table?
We can't, can we table a portion of it and adopt another? Because we couldn't adopt anything at the next meeting, because we'd have to go through two cycles, because we have to have a first reading and a second reading. So in other words, so, go ahead.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, my impression would be that if you adopt some of this, then the rest of it would have to go back through a process.
Okay. So it would be prudent, as long as our intent is, I'll just put a hypothetical before the council, we can't reach agreement on anything to do with edibles. It sounds like, and I won't be presumptuous, that the will of the council would be to at least move forward with Article One at the next meeting. In other words, there's nothing that we're missing out by not passing Article One tonight, as long as we pass it at the next meeting. And it's the only way to preserve the further discussion and more fleshed-out amendments to Article Two. In other words, we tabled the whole thing.
Yep. I'll move that if it's appropriate.
I got a motion on the floor.
Councilmember Edberg.
How do you want to deal with the motion that's on the floor?
Can I repeal it?
Well, I have a motion. Would you like to rescind your motion?
I would like to rescind my motion.
Very good. So I have a motion to table this definitely to the next meeting. Do I have a second?
Who made your motion?
Councilmember Walsh did.
On a second.
Any further discussion on this? Councilmember Edberg.
Yeah, I, I actually would be willing to take action tonight on alternative two minus Article Two, but including Article Three.
Point of, I get it, but I'm so confused. Point of order, Mr. Mayor. We have a motion and a second now.
Or debating whether we should table. That's, that's the nature of the conversation.
Yeah, it's further discussion on a motion and a second to table.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just to be clear, the option, the idea of taking Article Two out would not remove Article Three or Article Four. It would just renumber them to two and three. So it was just the idea would be to take the cannabis stuff out. Again, not advocating that, but just making it clear.
And, and just to clarify, if we did that and passed it, we would not be able to adopt an ordinance with regard to zoning of edibles in time before the moratorium expires, correct?
Correct.
And that's, and that's the issue. So I just want to make sure Councilmember Edberg understands that. If that's your intent, that's your privilege.
You're right. I am not, okay. What I'm trying to say is, the argument that I'm trying to make, I think, is, I, can we act on cannabinoids? Can we have enough action, and either votes for or against, now, to inform our thoughts about the, the edibles and zoning for edibles? Can we have enough conversation to advance that, either to know where we sit or what we need to think about, so that we can take action?
So just to pause there, yes, but we couldn't, based on the city attorney's advice, we couldn't take action at the next council meeting. In other words, we can't table a specific section. So if, if it's our intent to take it up and make policy on it prior to the expiration of the moratorium, so that we don't have grandfather issues, then, as the city attorney said, we can't adopt anything tonight. Any action on the second reading of the ordinance as proposed would have to, we'd have to start the process over if we wanted to look into other policy, other parts of the, of the ordinance. So there really is no solution unless, as you, if, you know, you can, you can vote against the motion to table and then bring a motion and move it, but just know that once we take an action on it, it's, that's over.
Yeah.
Any part of it.
Is there an, is there an actionable approach that allows us to at least deal with the edibles before the moratorium expires? And what does that look like?
Yeah, I guess the intent would be to work with staff to come up with, to make some sense of this debate, or individually make sense of the debate and come prepared with motions to amend that, that achieves your policy objective. That would be, that would be the goal. And it, whether, whether it goes somewhere or not, we would still be back at the dais with this in time before the end of the moratorium. Right. So that's why the motion was to table it definitely to the next council meeting.
Okay. Got it.
Any further discussion on the motion second to table definitely to the next meeting? Councilmember Jones.
For future, for next meeting, do we want to, I mean, I'll, I'll show my hand. I, I'm sorry, Bill, I, I understand where you're coming from, but I, on the edibles, I don't have a lot of, it's like, go ahead, do what we're doing, do what's, put it in the Speedway. If you want to have it, great. I do not have an issue with it, primarily from, unless someone can contend, this is why I want to, that we can enforce that, that we have the possibility. And Mayor, you bring up a good point with, I don't know if it's legal or has the right percentage, and, no, you're, you're absolutely right. I mean, we proved that fact, I think, earlier this year, to, but we don't control that. State, again, put cart in front of the horse. It's now in front of us. We have to do something, and we're stuck with it. Unless we want, there is a third option. We want to, can we put, I'm assuming we put another moratorium on.
No. No, we can't do that.
Can't do it all. It's illegal.
I'll ask the city attorney. We can't, we can't extend that.
No. Can't make a new one. Just saying. Yes or no?
I'm not in edibles.
Mr. Mayor, without going into explanation, let me just jump to no.
Oh, that's, I like that. You got me. Thank you. All right.
But that's the, but that's the, Councilmember Jones, that's the broader policy discussion that we're having. When you said, well, to my point, we don't know what it is, and we can't control the testing, that's beyond our control. No, but that's why, as a matter of policy, we do want to control how widespread it is. And I'm kind of, I'm kind of between, like, I, I want to slow-walk this. I think maybe it gets there. I just, I don't see the, I don't see the fire. I want to, I want to go slow. I was, as a matter of policy, I was very, very taken aback as we went through the prosecutorial process of this and testing it. And in my opinion, confirming that these, these edibles, we really don't know what's in it. So the notion that it, so the notion that we draw an analogy to 3-2 beer is just not, it's just not the case. I don't believe that from a, from a chemical makeup standpoint. I'm not a chemist, but if smart people can't tell me if it truly is this low-dose potency, because they can't test what percentage of THC is in it, then we don't know.
Well, you can have 18 3-2 beers and have the equivalency of, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I'm just saying.
Or you can load enough THC into a gummy that it's the same as blowing a joint, and it's full-blown pot, but we don't know.
Right.
So, but the, the point is, that's the general policy debate.
Extend.
Which, which we would extend to the next council meeting and give those that maybe want to see some amending to option one or two, to be able to have that option, that, that ability, and we'll bring it back to the dais, and if.
I mean, I don't, I'm really not, I'm, I'm just saying.
No, but I'm just saying, as a matter of process right now, that's what's before us.
Understood. I understand where you're coming from and respect that. This is where I'm coming from today, and it really is enforcement, is how, you know, if we go one way or another. Even saying, hey, it's all good, how do we enforce? I think it's a legitimate question, one way or another, with edibles.
Councilmember Edberg.
I'll note that the inconsistency in our labeling and testing is driven in large part by the absence of a national market, that as states set individual labeling requirements and standards, that creates many markets, and it makes it really tough for any manufacturer to label according to individual state. You end up balkanizing the market, and that, it's just a very inefficient process. Over time, what happens is that that, is that labeling and testing becomes embedded in the system. But it takes time. And Mayor, you are correct. It doesn't exist right now, and we, we can't, with high degrees of confidence, say that that's in place.
Yeah.
It won't be in place for a while.
Yeah. And I guess that, so just to underscore it, if the manufacturing process is sort of the Wild West right now, then I'm going to be extra cautious about the distribution process, which is the part that city government can control, is the broader point. So I have a motion and a second to table this definitely to the next meeting. I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
This motion carries. This is tabled to the next meeting.
Mayor, members of the council, at this point, I do not know what to bring back, so I am going to bring back the same ordinance. That's where we're at. Thank you.
So the note to the council, anyone who doesn't like what's currently before us, the onus is on you to reach out to whoever you need to with questions, but to come prepared with amendments. Fair enough? Okay.
Is there any agreement among us to limit to, to edibles, our, to limit our conversation in two weeks to edibles?
Yeah, I think any, everything's fair game in theory, but I, that, that to me, I think it would be a waste of time to do anything other than that debate.
If you were to offer guidance to staff, that would be my guidance, is, let, let's kick the dispensary stuff down the road. Let's focus on, on the edibles and how we would regulate and, and deal with that, at least to try and narrow our conversation, our preparation to that.
Is there consensus of the council for that?
Are we, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Are, I mean, are we looking at treating edibles and dispensary the same? Tough, I'm just saying.
Kind of re-debating, we.
Well, I guess in zoning, we can.
And that's what the, that's what it is. It's zoning.
Well, then we're back to option one.
Which is still part of the package.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to move on to item 8A, the 2024 preliminary budget and tax levy. Is Ms. Crawford or Ms. Kinzvater taking this?
This is me. Can I have just a second?
Catch, catch your breath after the last agenda item.
So tonight, we will review several things. It is an important document. It is late, but I'm not going to rush through it. So we will review the 23 revised budget, the 2024 proposed budget, discuss local government aid, the preliminary tax levy, and discuss levy comparisons. But first, I want to show you what it takes to build a budget. Okay, I'll, I'll give you the cue on next slides. Okay. So bear with me here. Maintaining a vibrant, healthy community is a bit like a sailboat. It takes many parts to make a sailboat move as it should, and without each of those parts, the boat won't sail as well as it could. So each department is better able to serve its function because of the other parts that work with it. The city has many departments and divisions that help make our community vibrant and a desirable place to live, work, and visit. Those departments can be compared to a sailing vessel that moves steadily and safely forward. So I'm going to show you how this works here. Next slide. So if you will take a hull, the hull of a sailboat, we would take that and compare that to the city of White Bear Lake. The physical place, natural landscape, people, buildings, and infrastructure in it. Then we would take our captain, which would be, in this case, the mayor and city council. As one body, they identify the strategic priorities and decide on the tools and timing to achieve them. Next, we have the tiller and rudder, which would be administration. Administration guides the day-to-day operations and ensures we are headed in the direction that our captain has identified. Next. Then we have the finance department, which we would relate to the keel. So the finance department or the keel ensures that the city stays stable by managing its finances, including monitoring its revenues, expenditures, and long-term asset planning. Next slide. Then we have the mast, which represents the police department. It's often one of the most visible parts of city government. They ensure safety of the community, whether that is mitigating emergency situations, preventing crime, or planning for the safe events and gatherings. Next. Then the fire department represents the boom. They provide support to the community that keeps it safe and on course, whether it is extinguishing fires, making rescues, providing emergency medical service, preventing fires, or conducting inspections and investigations. Next. And then we have the main sail, which would be engineering and public works. So by designing, building, and maintaining, maintaining its infrastructure, they keep the city moving forward each day. Their work is essential to quality of life, whether that is maintaining parks that are centered to a healthy and connected community, repairing the roads that quite literally allow us to move about, or providing water and sewer systems that keep the community safe and healthy. Next. And then lastly, we have community development. They're often looking to the future of the city. They help propel it forward and move efficiently by ensuring compatible land use, long-term investment, economic housing, economic and housing vitality, building safety, and livability. Next slide. So for the vessel to move forward on course and ensure that it can weather storms that cross its path, it is important to invest in the maintenance of each piece to ensure the integrity of the whole boat. As we approach each budget cycle, we take a holistic look at the organization or our vessel, and balance how we divide our resources between each department to ensure that through careful planning and investment, each piece is properly maintained to better serve the city as a whole. So it is with that lens that we put together our annual budget analysis recommendations, and so we're going to go over that tonight. Thank you for indulging me on that. Next slide.
Are the residents the wind?
Are the residents the wind?
I'm just, I really liked that. That was really helpful.
Sounds like it.
No, it was, that was, that was really cool. No, that was a really good analogy. That was helpful to kind of understand how that goes. I wasn't really being facetious. I mean, something's got to make it go, and that's the residents. So I'll let you continue, Ms. Crawford.
Thank you. So we will start with the 2023 revised budget tonight. So council adopted a 2023 general fund budget with a planned deficit of about $670,000. And that decision was possible due to the use of unrestricted surplus cash in the general fund. The twenty-three revised general fund budget, or general fund eliminated the need to use surplus due to position vacancies in multiple departments and higher year-to-date revenues in some accounts. Preliminary revised budget anticipates a surplus of about $55,000 for the year. Though the financial situation does appear to be successful, the reality is that departments, primarily public safety departments and community development, have been operating significantly understaffed, which does take a toll on employees and the level of service that we're able to provide. So receipts of federal aid during COVID years sustained our operations and held property tax levies at a lower level. That federal aid ended, which returns the burden of budget support to both tax and non-tax revenues. A high-level review of the overall budget process the past few years indicates that revenues are not rising at the same rate as expenditures in these economic times. Factors include equipment and supplies, cost increases, growing the fire department by adding staff and personnel costs. In the future, the annual budget process will not be able to rely on fund reserves to balance the budget since that strategy is not sustainable. The council will need to decide to either increase taxes further, generate additional non-tax revenues, or reduce services to support a balanced budget as soon as the 2025 budget. Next slide. So when we get into the 2024 preliminary budget, significant revenue changes for this budget are an unavoidable decrease in the building permit revenue because the school district permits are mostly complete. As I just said, receipt of federal COVID aid has expired and is no longer a source of revenue. So the city of White Bear Lake, just like many other cities, has relied on that funding over the past few years for operating and capital expenditures to offset property tax increases. Interest revenue estimates for the year are an extrapolation of allocated earnings based on the average cash balance as of June 30th this year. Reduction of payment management fund transfer of support for the engineering operations previously embedded in the payment management fund. And then we got, next slide, when we look at significant expenditure changes, the budget shows salary adjustment, salary adjustments per the adopted pay plan and labor agreements, as well as a 3% COLA adjustment. An increase in health, employee health insurance benefits, that's not the, the cost, that's the cost of the plans, not what we are giving to staff. The addition of two full-time firefighter paramedics, in addition of a facility maintenance position effective July 1, 2024. An Emerald Ash Board diseased and dying removal, dying trees removal program. Our zoning code update project, which is underway. Critical incident appropriations, and an increase in miscellaneous technology costs as well as contract cleaning services. So I want to talk a little bit about local government aid or LGA, as I'll refer to it from here. LGA is a program based on a complex formula to equalize a city's ability to provide an average level of service at a reasonable property tax rate. As a city's property values increase, the formula reduces the amount of aid distributed to a city. White Bear Lake began realizing a reduction in LGA in 2021. At that time, it was decided to gradually reduce our reliance on LGA for operating expenditures and instead shift that to capital expenditures. The 2023 legislative session produced a funding increase for the LGA program as well as formula updates. And as a result, our, the city of White Bear Lake's LGA allotment increased by $467,000. At a budget work session, the council indicated their desire to hold the LGA allocation for city operations at the 2023 level to lower the 2024 property tax increase. Staff recognizes, and I believe the city council acknowledges, that this funding source, although it is stable now, may be reduced or eliminated in the future, which will require higher property taxes to support operating and capital expenditures. Next slide. The 2023 state tax omnibus bill also included $300 million in public safety aid for cities. The city will receive a one-time amount of just over $1 million, which is restricted to the use, uses for recruitment, retention, and equipment costs for the police and fire departments. The fire chief, the police chief, and myself, both our previous police chief and our new police chief, have evaluated potential uses for those funds, and we do propose using $948,500 for operating capital expenditures as outlined on your screen here. We request leaving the remaining $148,000 as unallocated at this time until a further analysis can be done by the new police chief and myself. So when we look at our preliminary tax levy, the proposed preliminary tax levy reflects a 17% or $1,694,000 increase for operations and a 5.53% or $551,000 increase for debt service related to the public safety facility project. The preliminary tax levy totals $12,200,000. So therefore, the total preliminary tax levy reflects a 22.5% or $2,245,000 increase over the previous year's levy. This proposed tax levy is possible through the allocation of some of the public safety LGA and no reduction of general LGA assigned to the general fund. The tax capacity rate related to this levy is 27.755%. The state auditor recommends that the city, that cities keep a minimum of 42% of operating costs on hand to cover unanticipated costs. The fund balance projected for 12/31/23 covers 40.28% of next year's expenditures. Although that percentage is just below the state auditor's recommendation, it, it does comply with the city council policy, requiring the fund balance to be between 35 and 50%. And a second analysis tracks fund balance to ensure funds are available to pay claims in the first half of each year. Since three, we receive a large, our, our large revenue payment in either June or July each year. So the anticipated fund balance for 12/31/23 is 60.35% of the 2024 projected revenue, which provides sufficient funds to pay those claims in the first half of next year. Next slide. So what does this all mean? Where does a, where does a median home value income, median home value property, where do their taxes go? So the 23 median home value for taxes payable in White Bear Lake, payable in '24, is $312,000. That is a 1.96% increase in property value, which is set by the county auditor. In 2024, a median home value at, at that rate would pay $840.70 for the entire year in city property taxes. So as you can see on your screen for that price, this property owner receives exceptional quality of life and 24/7 police response, 24/7 fire and emergency medical response, street maintenance, sweeping, lighting, snow plowing, parks access and recreation activities, election activities, access to city publications, and access to elected and city staff, elected officials and city staff. When we zoom out, we look at where does the tax dollar go? So several entities also assess properties for taxes. So for every property tax dollar, approximately 18 cents is collected by the city of White Bear Lake. The remainder is then divided among Ramsey and Washington Counties, the school district, and other agencies. And those other agencies include watershed districts and Met Council, for example. Thank you. Okay, so this chart is a comparison of our revenue collection per capita with some comparable cities. This includes 2024 preliminary levies, which obviously are subject to change. But White Bear Lake has a greater population than some of these cities, yet a much smaller tax levy. This means that our per capita revenue collection is at the bottom of the list with, at $548. Next slide. And then this chart shows five years of levy history with comparable cities, including estimated preliminary tax levy increases for '24 again. White Bear Lake remains at the bottom, where we have historically been with comparable communities. Although we are beginning to catch up, our 2024 proposed tax levy increase is still less than what New Brighton's was last year and less than Shoreview's 2020 levy. So that is a high-level, try-to-be-quick overview of our budget presentation for today for the preliminary discussion, and the city finance director and myself can stand for questions that you may have at this point. So the city council, sorry, I forgot this slide. You're good. You have to set the preliminary tax levy no later than September 26th. We have, we will conduct our truth in taxation hearing and adopt the final tax levy and budget on December 12th. And while the council may reduce the tax levy before final adoption in December, it may not be increased. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Very helpful. Well, it's just the first one. We're, we're setting the ceiling tonight pursuant to state law, so it can always go down from there. I don't really have any comments. Anyone have any comments on this at this time? Councilmember Walsh?
Not, not comments, questions. Well, I might both. Just, I'm trying to start with the, maybe, maybe go back in slides, sort of to the beginning, the surplus, the $670,000 surplus. You call it a surplus. Well, so we ended, I, I don't understand. We ended 2022, we had, we had $670,000 available to us to use as carry forward. Carry forward is another word for it. We get the terminology wrong, but, but we had, we, we were planned to carry forward $670,000 to make the budget whole for 2023. And then in fact, we didn't end up using it. Okay? Right? Am I, am I right? I think I'm right in that, right?
Yes, the $670,000 is, is called unrestricted surplus cash.
Yeah, and you, you guys made up for it with unfilled vacancies and cost cutting and everything else. So we finished, we're finishing 2023. We didn't need to dip into that money. So my question is, where is that money? Is that, is that still in the bank? Is that available to do it again? Or is it just, so you're proposing, because you say we end, we're going to, now we're proposed to end with a $55,000 surplus within, in the budget. I guess my question is, since we didn't use it last year, is it available to do that again? Are you just recommending from a policy standpoint not to do that again?
I, so everything you said is correct. We need, we thought we would need that money. We budgeted. I presented you an unbalanced budget, budgeted deficit. We did not need to use the money from our savings account, if you will, again, to simplify things. Instead, we had so many vacancies, truthfully a detriment to our organization and community, that we ended with a surplus of about $55,000. That money will remain in our fund balance. It will, it is unrestricted cash that can be used. The budget that was presented to you at the August work session again presented an unbalanced budget with a deficit. Based on the consensus of those in the room that evening, we reworked. And I'm, we're, what is in your packet is a balanced budget, so we are proposing not to use any surplus cash. And I'm, I'm saying, I hit home on that because it is not a sustainable budget practice to do going forward.
So that maybe answers my second question. Sort of, I can't really tell what changed from our work session to tonight. So I think you just explained it, right? So you.
A little bit.
Go ahead.
So we were using less LGA in the, in version one. We were proposing staff and Carrie and I were proposing to use less LGA in version one and using that more towards capital. That's the direction that council had previously set staff on that path. That's, that's where we headed. The work session, again, the consensus of those in the room had said, let's use, because we are receiving more LGA now, this one time, let's keep that in, on the general fund and operating and put less towards capital. So we did that, and which helped with, it helped lessen the deficit dollar amount. And then we also found about $65,000 where we could cut to bring you a balanced budget tonight.
So the, the thing I struggle with is, and I, we made that change, you guys made that change bringing it forward tonight, using the LGA money to replace what would have been using the surplus, using cash in the, in the bank going forward. But, so it didn't affect the levy, I guess is my problem.
That's correct.
You, you guys, we were going to use LGA instead of carry forward in the general fund. So the levy didn't change from, from our August meeting to today. It's still at the same rate. We're going to still go out and get the same amount of money. So it's, it's good because we don't, you say deficits. But I, you and I disagree in that terminology. I know that's the, the right terminology, but it's confusing because I don't think we deficit, we did an unbalanced budget last year. We, we had a plan with a budget that was balanced. We were going to use some carry forward to, to make it happen. Turns out we didn't need to, but I, I guess you always say we're, I think it's a negative word. That's why I always say that. We're not, we're not doing anything negative or, or unwise. We're not, we're not running deficits. But I get, you and I have talked about this, the, the language and everything, but. So this year, we're not even worried about that because we are in fact not going to use any carry forward, what's in the bank, cash. We're going to use the LGA instead, but the levy didn't change from August to tonight, so.
That's correct.
If you want the levy to change, we'd have to do, we'd have to do something else.
Have to find further cuts.
Yeah. I have one more. Oh, the public safety LGA money and the uses of it. Maybe we could bring that slide up. I don't know if you can find it, but there's a slide on the public safety, public safety aid. Don't they call it public safety LGA?
There you go.
Yeah, so are we, are we using this money? Some of it's for one-time use, some of it is for equipment. You can see on that list. But some of it, you got, you've got it listed, capital and operating. So my, I guess my question is, is the operating supplanting stuff we'd already planned? Or are we saying, oh, look, we have this money, let's do some other things we can operate on? I mean, I see NYFS crisis response. That's something we're already doing. So is that $29,000 we're now supplanting with this, with this LGA?
That is correct.
Could you characterize the whole list that way? Or are there some things we're doing that are new?
There, my eyes are not gray right now. Let me find mine.
I mean, I mean, the, the policy point is, that, my preference would be to use the money to supplant what we're already doing to lower that burden on the budget and on the, on the property tax.
So the things that are new operating are the additional firefighter paramedic, the police policy and training software. Let me see here. Police cell phones.
We have the additional firefighter paramedic. We have, we have those, that's in the plan anyway.
It's in the plan. This is just how it's paid for.
You could argue that that's.
It's just how it's paid for.
Supplanting even.
No, it's a brand-new position.
Well, I understand, but, but it's, you know, we'd already planned to do it, so I'm trying to help you. I think that's, that actually is using this public safety LGA for something we were already going to do, which is good.
The police cell phones and the fire training water rescue mannequin. Those are new. And so yes, I understand firefighter paramedic is on our plan. However, it's not in the tax levy. It's not being paid for in a tax levy in '24. It's proposed to be paid for by public safety LGA. Therefore, it will have to be added in, in 2025. Already showing you a tax levy increase for 2025.
But we as a council have sort of put ourselves on a path to add firefighters and paramedics.
That's correct.
So we should understand that. I don't consider that, but it's new this year, but it's not new to the budgeting process. Which is good.
Point on that, Mr. Mayor? So part of that with the funding of the paramedics slash ambulance drivers was that we were funding part of that through COVID funds. Am I wrong on that assumption? And now it's coming out, it has to come out of general. And now it's coming out, it has to come out of general.
Mayor, Councilmember Jones, it is correct that the city had supplemented the ambulance fund with ARPA, with ARPA funds, yes, in, as well as that fund, which is now being transitioned to the general fund at the direction of the council and staff's recommendation. But it has been growing as well. So it's kind of-
So it's not new, but it, how it's being-
Funded.
Funded is, but the expense was already there and been approved three years ago, four years ago, whenever we went on this path.
Yeah.
The concept, yeah.
Correct.
Thank you.
I have maybe a couple more, but others can maybe go.
Councilmember Edberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I want to address two things. I'd like to address two things that provide additional context, Mr. Walsh. So the money that we didn't spend, the $670,000, remains available in our fund balance. The challenge or the issue, and this connects to what the city manager told us, is that we, in fact, because our budget is growing, the percentage of budget that is required or strongly recommended that we retain, that number also goes up. And so our fund balance doesn't cover as much of that proportion as it used to. So it didn't go anywhere, but our needs have grown for cash flow. And so that's a second dynamic. These, these numbers are not static year to year. And so we, we're aiming at moving targets. Nothing, nothing new and unique. I'm just saying that it's, it's not useful in my brain to talk about fund balances that arise, it never left the fund balance. It's all, it's still there. But our need for fund balance has, grows as our expenditures grow. So, and the fact that we are now having a fund balance that is a lower percentage than we have historically carried, that's, that's a relevant consequence of that decision. And it's all good. It's just, that's why we're below the legislative auditor's recommendation. We're still in a fine place. Our auditors have not raised that as an issue. We're okay. The second piece, that as we've had this discussion about ARPA and other sources of funding, in this case, public safety LGA, we are masking to our public the costs that they are directly paying for the improvements in public services that we are implementing. So we made, we did indeed make a decision several years ago to move to a different model of, of EMT firefighting. Okay? We're going to hire full-time people. The cost of doing that has been subsidized by these other sources of funds. Those subsidy dollars are coming to an end, so we will not, and the good news is, we have shielded our taxpayers from the full burden. They've gotten a benefit. We have used these other unusual revenues, unusual and the non-traditional, non-historical revenues that have been sizable. And we have used that to pay for the improvement in our ambulance and fire service. So the, we should be prepared and confidently look our constituents in the eyeballs and say, hey, we, we have changed a fundamental system that's critical to the health and well-being of our citizens, which our citizens are actually enjoying at higher and higher rates because we're getting older and older. All right? That's that curve of how many runs we make every year. All right? You are consuming more services, but you're not having to pay for them on your property taxes yet. In another year or two, all of those are going to show up now as items that we're going to have to pay for out of our general fund tax levies. We won't have these other cookie jars that will help bite on that cost. We have set our path. That's our future. I don't think we can walk that future back very easily. We will still make decisions every year, but it's like, that's a path. And so when we look at percentage increases in our property tax levies, that's a natural consequence. It's going to be there. Start thinking now about how we're going to talk about it.
That Mr. Jones did by opening the dispensary.
Councilmember Walsh. Can you spend a little more time on the ambulance shift? That's a major part of this number. And I don't think we, you spent enough time on it because we, we've been subsidizing ambulance rides because of federal reimbursement rates. We talked about this before here. We've, it's been in the ambulance fund and we're, we're being more transparent, I think, and we're moving it to the general fund. But that is a, it looks to me, maybe you can give me the right numbers, but it looks to me like a $3 million shift in income and a $4 million shift in cost. So the $4 million, that, that just grows the size of everything. That's how we get to 12 million so fast. But then also, there's a, there's a negative effect on the balance there because we're bringing in 3 million in income, but, but 4 million in cost, it's a, that's a loss of a million dollars. Do I have that right? Is that, and I think that's a significant part of this that maybe should be talked about a little more.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so the ambulance fund, as we have discussed, has needed assistance. When we look at, and we set our ambulance rates, 75% of our patients that we transport have Medicare or assistance, where we are very limited to collecting very minimal amounts. So we are not recouping our amounts to support our services. And when we have our ambulance fund, we're trying to make enough money to support our operating costs and our capital costs, but we're not trying to make excessive amounts of money. So we're not in there for profit. It's just, we want to make it so that we can provide a good service for our residents and people who are using the ambulance service. So as we have been adding the staff so that we can have good response times and offer that service, the revenues coming in haven't been able to support those expenditures. And we needed to come up with a better solution of how we could make sure that we could keep that service viable. And so that's when we met earlier this year in a work session and started talking about moving it to the general fund. So bringing in, if I remember right, the expenditures are 3 million and the revenues that we're bringing in are 2,317,000. So we're, we're bringing in the ambulance revenues. It's estimated that there's 159,000. You know, as we look at where we estimate 2023 revised budget will be, there will probably be a fund balance of about 159,000. So that is being transferred into the general fund. And then there were some ARPA funds that were being used to supplant in your, that action plan that you set a couple of years ago, that were going to be used to help. So then that money has also been transferred to the general fund.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's a big part of what we're dealing with. Another question, the Emerald Ash Bore beginning, what was the, what's the dollar amount on that? What are we, what are we doing this year for tree removal?
Yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Walsh, so we have been setting aside, not setting aside, we've been using about $35,000 every year for the last several years to treat Emerald Ash Bore and the trees that we, to try and prevent them from dying and being completely diseased. That has ramped up significantly. We have now mapped everywhere they need to be. So in April, I believe, the city council had a work session. We showed you, it's going to cost us approximately $3 million to rectify all of these trees, which means removing and replanting with a different variety of different species. So we said, how do you want us to handle this? I believe we settled on about an eight-year plan to help, again, ease that, that burden on taxpayers. So it was $150,000 in this tax levy. We are also playing, applying for state aid, state grants that have just come out through the legislature, which I think those are due actually this week.
Mayor, members of the council, there's one that we will be applying for that is due early next week, and then there's one that's due early October. But we'll be applying for each of those for a maximum of a half a million dollars, so.
Councilmember Jones. So, I mean, I think if I was a taxpayer, didn't know where we'd come and seen the jumps and ask why, and it's a fair question. And we've touched on it, and I don't want to spend, I mean, Billy brought up a good point, but I mean, it's like, we need to start thinking about our public safety, that ambulance, fire is police. We've never really thought about it up until the last three, four years like that. We haven't financed it like that. And it's cost of doing business. It just is. So for someone to not think, to see five years ago, six years ago, our ambulance rates, response rate being dangerously low, in my opinion, and the rectification was that we can't rely on paid-on-call volunteers. And that cost is kind of fully coming home, and it's nothing that the council, you guys don't know, but it's like, to me, does the general public know that? Staff, we have severely, in my opinion, I don't want to speak for anybody else in the council, underpaid our staff, and I consider myself held responsible for that. I think I can say that easier because I'm not going to be here to live through this budget. But that's been on me. I've been part of that. And it was a mistake because I look at, we should have been doing 1% to 2% or even a .5 to a three-quarter over the last 10 years to make up for that. We saw it coming and we, I don't want to say ignored it, but that, at the end of the day, that's what we did. Infrastructure, it cannot be ignored. It cannot be ignored. We need to get past these years where we've, we've got a pair of bills. We understand that. If I'm at home, I've got a budget for rough whatever. And you know what? Nothing new. Times are tough. Nothing's new is going into that, that fund, but I'm not going to dip into it either. And the last thing for me, and it's the big thing for this, is the EAB. I mean, for anybody who's walked around this summer in the neighborhood, I mean, it is so much more apparent than yesterday. And I know, living on Cedar Avenue, I can see the trees that the cities are treating. They are surviving. Our expectations that they, we survive as long as we can, but we're looking at $3 million to preserve one of the biggest assets of our city, which is our urban forest. Take away our trees, and what's ironic, my mother just, I kicked my mother out of the house. But she moved into a senior assisted living. So we were going through photos and it was just unbelievable to see 1959 and see that I could see three, four blocks away, no trees. And so that just kind of hit me, that we've got to address it. Now, I don't know if we can address everything we need to do, and I'm not saying to do it all. But we, it needs to be addressed because all of this is the well, wellness of where our, is our city. And looking, you know, the ambulance rate, I mean, I've said it before and before, I got on the council, it was 3,500, now it's well over 5,000. That's a massive increase. Volunteers, as much as we all want them to be, they're, they're not there. I'm not saying anything about our society, I'm just saying they're not there. Same with fire. And it's one of those things of going back to looking at the charts that I certainly hope get put out to that city where we've done everything we can to hold our taxes. Probably we did too much. And now it's here. And looking at competitive cities, I don't know, I, I don't want to hang our neighbor out, but there's, I'm just going to say it, I just look at Shoreview and go, where is their tax money going? With what we have and what they have to offer for services? What are they spending their money on? I think it's a valid question off all the services that we offer. And one last touch on, on city staff, churn can be okay. Turn is horrible. We don't need turn. And when I know that locally within our White Bear area, that nonprofits are paying their executive director more than our city manager gets, what's our city worth? 20 billion? If you took up the whole value, do you even have that number rolling around? I heard it one time in the, it's a math, I mean, it's the most important asset of your life. Do you want someone driving the car of your house? I think you get my point. But I mean, it's just come home, there's been a lot of reasons, and I feel compelled to say, yeah, I had some accountability for that. There's always good reasons. We can say this, we can say that. So we had some tough times. We could have been doing something better and to our taxpayers, now we're doing it. And we're still coming at it at good value underneath. And sadly, we're not done. It's not over. But also with the stat too, Carrie, the, my only question is, in the packet, or maybe it's you, that the average house only went up 1.6%?
Median.
Median, median, 1.6, median, 1.6%. You think about that, how's everybody else's cost gone up in the last year? Costs of everything, day to day, whether I go to Home Depot and buy a two-by-four groceries, whatnot, as that kept pace. Because that's, we're paying all those costs. So there are a lot of factors that are going into this. And lastly, I don't think our city manager really wanted to bring her second full-blown budget with this number. And I'm saying this to the public, not to our council, because I think, I know our council understands this. This is our budget that we're responsible for as council members, and we're okay. We're okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? Councilmember Walsh.
Just one more question, sorry. Interest. We used to, we used to talk about interest a lot in this, in this room, and I did a little research. I mean, we, we were getting huge revenue from interest, you know, in 2007 and 2008. And I, I just, a little history lesson, just, it looks like we're, we're banking $120,000 or $130,000 in interest in the, in revenue, on the revenue side. And so just, what are we, I mean, the, I used to hear these stories about, oh, we got, you know, with 2.4 million dollars in interest, or 1 million dollars in interest, and we used it to do street maintenance. We had no debt. We built the maintenance facility down the road for $7 million because we had all this interest income. But the highest, I mean, the, the, I looked up the Fed rate, the Fed discount rate, the highest it ever got during that time was like 6%. And it's at 5.5 today. So did, what, how did we do that? Was there, was there a $40 million balance we were earning interest on? I mean, how do we get $1 million in interest back then? And is it ever going to come back? Or what are we doing now? And which, what, what money do we even earn interest on? All of our funds or some of our funds? That's kind of my, my interest question.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so previously, before 2019, when the interest was allocated, the management was choosing what funds to apply the interest to. There was a decision in the budget of how to apply that. In 2019, when our auditors were reviewing our items, looking at the standards from the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, because we have pooled investments, we have all of our cash and our investments are all pooled and invested. So since we have this pooled environment, we really need to be allocating interest to every fund, not just specific funds, based on their averaged cash balance. So starting in the 2019 financial statements and moving forward, every year we go through a calculation that takes, this is our interest that we earn. We, we don't look at one specific day where the cash balance is in those funds. We look at four different times during the year because each fund fluctuates and when their, their expenditures are going out or their revenues are in there. And then we allocate the interest so in our financial statement now, all funds are receiving interest. And so we haven't been allocating interest when we've done our budgets in the past few years, when the market was very, very bad and very low on our rates because we weren't earning a lot of interest. And so to put that interest revenue into a budget and then not be able to meet the mark, you were, you'd be setting your expenditures at a level and not having the revenues to come in to support them. So conservatively, we chose not to budget them. The interest rates now are high enough and we're earning 4.5% to 5.5% depending on where we're investing to, because we invest in a ladder structure. So we're making sure that we have interest payments coming due on a regular basis so that we can pay our bills. So as we look at it, we've calculated in the 2023 budget did not include interest. The 2023 revised budget and the 2024- budget and the 2024 budget do include interest. So we did an early calc, as of June, the end of June, we figured out how much interest have we earned this year. And then we went through the process to allocate it out to all of the funds equally, and, or based on their averaged cash balance to that point. And then we extrapolated what it would be, or estimated what we thought it would be for the year. We didn't just take that number and double it, because being just a little conservative, over the last couple of years, we've had the issues where, for our financial statements, we've talked about this, where we have to convert our, we do a mark-to-market adjustment on our investments. And so we look at where all of our investments are, what their value is at the end of the year, and then we have to adjust them to their market value. The last couple of years, because the interest rates were rising so high, then it looked like we had a loss. And so the loss that we've seen has only been on paper, and it's only in our financial statements. We lost no money. We'll still earn all of our money, because the next day, if the market changed and our, the values were up, then it would look a lot different. But when the items mature, or when they pay their interest, we still get the interest that we're supposed to be getting. So I was, I took, I looked at that June 30th number. I doubled it to see what it would be, and then I held back a little bit, just because we don't know where the economy is going to be at the end of the year, and wanting to make sure that we weren't saying, yes, we're going to have all of these expenditures, and we're going to have all of this interest, and then not have it happen. So, so the interest is included in the budgets.
Am I right? Is it in that $130,000 range? Does that sound right?
To the general fund.
Yeah, yeah, looking at general fund. So what about like the community reinvestment fund with that $6 million or so? That, the interest that fund earns stays in that fund?
Yes.
So that, that could be actually earning some income and slowing, I guess, we're depleting that fund over time. Maybe it's slowing it down a little bit with some revenue going back into it.
So can I just follow up on that? Because I, I guess I'm looking for a little more detailed explanation. Your question, I think, what councilmember Walsh's question was, so one of three things has to be true. Either that was folklore, that we used to get $2.5 million a year in interest, or what was, what was the cause of it? Because why is it so much lower? Was it because we were getting roughly the same returns on a much higher principal? Or do we have roughly the same principal, and we were getting much higher returns? And that's, that's kind of the seminal question.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I guess I didn't go back and look at that to see what our, I'd have to go back and pull what our investment portfolio, like those investments she looked at at that time. I don't know that off the top of my head.
Sure. I think maybe councilmember Edberg has some historical knowledge for us.
So when I came on the council in 2010, within the first year, we opened the new public, public works facility. The money for that was paid all in cash. Jones, eight, nine, 10 million?
Yeah, I was just wondering, it's like nine to 10.
Okay. So the, the city had, we were doing the paid-on call, so we didn't have the, ambulance and fire costs that we have today. There were a number of other things that we were frugal. We were in, we were in good years for LGA mostly. And we had other entrepreneurial funds that came in, that ended up giving us, I'm going to guess it was between 10 and 20 million dollars at its peak of, of reserves that were investable at least for part of a year. And if you, so on 10 million, that last year before we had to start paying for the public works, say 10 million at 5% is 500,000 bucks. So it doesn't take too, too many of those to say, oh, now, I don't know whether it was 2.5 million, that would be a historical research, but it was, it was sizable. And when you can do that year after year after year, so you do that over 10 years, now you got 5 million bucks. And, and so that's how that, that's how it gets generated, and then you make decisions about how to spend it. So, and as Carrie mentioned, the decisions then were, we could place interest where we wanted to. So we could be more strategic and intentional about building certain asset buckets inside of our budget, where we would capture, hold, invest for a future expenditure. So it wasn't nefarious. It was intentional and planned, but it was pay it forward. And that created resource that we don't have the luxury of creating, certainly not without a much higher reliance on a property tax. And as, as you can see from the charts, we have, that's not the pathway we have gone. So it's a, it's a complex story, but I don't think it's fundamentally untrue. I also don't think it's fundamentally repeatable in the foreseeable future.
Yeah, that's helpful. That makes sense. We just had more cash in the bank, so there was, there was a higher principle, simple as that, which we depleted pretty quickly when we paid cash for a public works building.
Yeah.
And since that last cycle, we've never then, methodically, for whatever reason, built it back up.
Not to that level.
And for example, the data on that is if you look at the city levy in 2008, compared to the city's levy, general fund levy in 10 years later, 2018, virtually identical.
Sure, yeah, no, I understand.
There was no rebuilding, no, you know, stocking the larder. It was, no, we're just going to flatline it.
It's right here. I got the, I, I went and got the packet from my first budget on the council, if you'll indulge me. You know, councilmember was right. The first budget I voted for was, was a little bit less than $5 million, which is virtually unchanged from 2007. I'm looking at the chart here, but that interest thing is, I mean, it's a, it's a bar. I can't, there's no number on it. But it's, it's over 2.5 million in 2007. It dropped down to under $2 million in '08, all the way down to probably 500,009, maybe 250 in '10, and then it just keeps going down, negative in 2013, as, you know, as the interest rates just tanked. And then that was no longer a source of revenue. So you can kind of see it here graphically. But you're right, you can also see the budget, the budget when I got here was about $5 million, the levy, not the budget, the levy.
You're right, Bill.
So it, just wanted a little bit of history there, but I mean, this is like, the rates are back, but we don't have the cash in the bank that we used to, and we're dispersing it across all those different funds. That does explain, that's, that's a great answer, because I didn't, hey, if the rate's back, we have, we have a lot of money in the bank, you know, why aren't we realizing those kind of returns? So.
Mayor, can I continue with the history?
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, the other big problem was that our road reconstruction funds, Bill, could not sustain themselves. So because that interest wasn't getting, we had to levy for road reconstruction, that we chose to keep that program going. And again, now we're, it's a double, double effect. So now we're paying interest on money borrowed, and we haven't, it's not free, so it's almost like a double hit. And during that entire time, let's not forget, the housing market went from, my house was $400,000, it went down to $200,000, and it didn't get back till, you know, 2018, 19, somewhere in there, back to $400,000.
Right.
And so now, I mean, to me, looking back, I mean, if I could say, you know, one thing to myself, it's like, we should have been dang and a half percent a year for that right there. But, you know, we didn't. We went conservative. We're like, okay, everybody's housing is going down.
Right.
Right. I mean, it's like, I'm not saying the decision was wrong. I'm not making an excuse. But it's like, hindsight is always 20-20. We should have been saying, wow, they're going to bounce back. But we didn't. And then that was keeping those, that levy at 6 million, 6 million, 6 million by that, those years. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And so, just an observation. We are talking a lot of dollar signs and some percentage signs. That's important. That's valuable. It's useful. It's also equally important to say, what has that purchased? What do we have today? Because we don't talk about how few number of sewer line breaks do we have today, because we are now lining the inside of our sewers, and we're doing things in differently, different ways, so we don't have sewer breaks. The vast majority, amen to that. The vast majority of our streets have been completely reconstructed and are in far superior condition to last us into the next generation. They, they got us through the 60s when, or the 70s, when we built out the whole South Side, and now we're replacing, and we have good roads. We have response time and capacity to, to respond to emergencies. That is very satisfactory. And the fact that those, that the number of people who need that service, and we can have conversations about how much they, some of them need it, but that number keeps going up, and we're handling it. And people are being received at the hospital, or in places that they need to get to, and, with good care, and in really good response time. So while we talk about a lot of numbers, and we talk about taxes, got it, we got to, we got to crunch that, it's useful and important for us to talk about what do we have, and what has that purchased, and what opportunities does that provide to us in the next phase of our community's life. And we don't spend near enough time, I don't think, talking about those things. That's a question of value versus cost.
Any final comments on the preliminary budget and tax levy? Okay, I'm sure there'll be much more to come.
Final comments, but I think after a motion is maybe more appropriate. We haven't made a motion.
I'll move to approve what staff has presented, resolution.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Well, just a final comment. I mean, I don't disagree with, with, we've been, we've been sort of sitting here convincing ourselves that we need to do this, and I'm convincing myself we need to do this. The only thing I talk about, we talked about the past a little bit, which I think is useful, but just the future. I think we just got to get our arms around the future. I mean, there's, there's, there's a lot of incongruent statements that can be true, even though they're, they sound incongruent. We can say, you know, this is a huge tax increase we're going to vote for today and in December. We've raised taxes every year I've been on the council since 2016. That's a true statement. Our per capita tax levy is $430, best in the Twin Cities, comparable to cities our size, best in the state comparable to cities our size. That is also true. The school district that we live in, in 2019, went out for the largest referendum in the history of the state for, for a building referendum, $330-some million. That's also true. And that, that hits the same taxpayers. And we can say that's not us, and it's not, we didn't vote for that. But it's the same taxpayers, seeing their property tax bill, not distinguishing that that's, you know, we're 18 cents and they're 39 cents. So that's, that's another piece. We just talked about debt a minute ago. You know, we've, we couldn't rely on interest income for street reconstruction. We started borrowing for that. We just borrowed for a very large building next door. I voted for it. It's the right thing to do. We have to do it. We are, we are, we have been a city that hasn't had a lot of debt, and that's how, that's kept that, that, that cost down, our debt service cost down. We are growing into a city that is taking on a lot of debt. So I, and I don't have a, I don't have a solution today for this number, for this budget. I can tell you that I asked the staff for our work session, I asked the staff for org chart, a detailed org chart with every, every, not people, but every position on it. And you could, anybody can, you know, come and get that and spend some time going through that, and, and, you know, tell me which positions we're, we're going to eliminate, because government is people, and essentially. And we got some equipment, obviously, and some buildings, but it really, it's, okay, sailboat. Parts of the sailboat, you know, are people. And, and, and just, we did a salary study a few years ago, or was it two years ago now, I think? And of course, the salary study said, for surprise, we're not paying our people enough, comparable to other people in the industry in different cities. And so we set off on a path to catch up. And so there's a 3% increase, a pay raise in here, and another few percentage points to help us catch up. And that's going to be happening for several, for, for years, well, for the indefinite future. So that's a huge cost in this additional few million dollars we're doing, like 750,000 of it is just the increase in staff costs. So you can argue, staff shouldn't have got a 3% raise, maybe they should have got a 2.5. I didn't get a 2.5% raise last year, you know. Some of our taxpayers didn't. Okay, we can argue that, but essentially, I don't bicker with the salary study, or with the, with the, what they brought forward on that. So, you know, all those things are true. I just, I guess, and the last one is, we're on a path to grow a fire department from a paid-on-call volunteer to a full-time, several shift, three shifts, full-time employees. That's a massive change, obviously a massive change in a budget over time. I don't know that we have any choice to do that. And it's, you know, partly because we don't have personnel, you know, able to answer the calls anymore like we used to, for whatever reason, work schedules and things like that. And our call volume is through the roof from eight years ago, 10 years ago, when that was maybe working better. And, and those calls are different, the type of call they're, they're taking. So I don't know if we have any choice but to go to a full-time, and we're, and we're several years away from completing that task, right? We talked about that at our work session. We're at, I can't even remember, we're at, we're getting to 18, now we're getting to 16 now. We need to get to 20 or 21 to really be where the chief wants us to be. We can argue whether we go all the way, but the path we've set out gets us to 21, 20.
That's correct. We're at 16. Next year, we will be at 18 if you approve this.
There's a few more years of two firefighters in the budget additional, that's going to put strain on that levy. So I, my sense, my, my thing is just that, in communicating, in, in getting, you know, the, the grand bargain with the taxpayers, making them understand that there's, there's an end in sight. I get frustrated with this, well, there's nothing we can do. Well, it costs money, so we got to keep raising the levy. Yes, but let's, let's try to get our arms around it. I want to get my arms around a little better. And we are, because we're, okay, a few more years of the fire build out. We're going to pay debt for 20 years on this building. We're paying debt now to, to finish the street project. I'm all in on that. But that is going to wrap up. We just got to be, I guess my concern, or my warning for the future is, we, we got to keep our eye on the debt and growing, and we have to keep our eye on that, on that levy. This is a big one, you know. Maybe there's some catch-up in this one, and then next year might not be so huge. I'm going to support the resolution today. I'm going to work, we have, you know, a few months. We'd love to hear from citizens between now and December 12th, I think it is, when we pass a final levy. If they're, if they have any ideas, if people have ideas on where, what we shouldn't be doing, because if you want to cut government, you have to tell us what not to do. And, and I'm open for suggestions. And like I said, I've gone through the org chart. We are, we are not staff-heavy. We don't have superfluous things. You asked about the other cities. Other cities have, you know, a lot of things we don't have, like libraries, economic development authorities, zoos, airports, municipal liquor stores, you know, that could, may or may not make money.
Hey.
Well, they make liquor money. Well, maybe that's a bad example, because they, they're probably cash cows. But, but other cities do other things that we don't do. That's why we're, so we need to, I would say, keep doing what we're doing, support what we're doing, fund what we're doing. If we start doing other things, that's when we grow, and we move up that chart with other cities on our per capita spending and taxing. So I guess that's sort of confessions of a tax raiser today. I mean, I'm, I'm ready to vote for this, but it's, it's a, it's a big increase. And I'm interested in any ideas between now and December 12th.
Mr. Mayor, one last thing, please. Mr. Lindahl, can you flip back the pie chart to the breakdown? So if my memory is correct, which may or may not, but I'm pretty sure it is, that percentage was 16 cents 16 years ago. And if I told you, Mr. Bill, if I had told you that it went up 16% to 18, or 16 cents to 18 cents, I'd be going, that's pretty good shape. That's not bad. It's not bad. And regards to the school district, everybody can feel different. This is my take on this. We didn't pay for a new high school for 55 years. And anybody who went through those buildings, we saved, the, the school district saved us a ton of money by not spending that money. And for whatever reason, they didn't, in my opinion, they should have done it sooner and spread that out. But they didn't. But, and I, and I can't control what the school, we can't control. We've got to do what we've got to do. And I, I have heard that before. Well, they're doing this, county might be doing this. This, okay, my neighbor might be doing that. My neighbor might be doing this. I got to do this. This is my house. We got to think 100% about what we're doing. And as regard for, you know, saying, I'm not, I don't want to attach this to bill. So in my little roundtable of saying, hey, guys, my folks that I talked to, get, put my finger in the wind, yeah, it's going to be another big one. Well, that's just too much. Well, you're right. It is a lot. But I'm like, for me, the only thing that's like, what don't you want? But I'm like, for me, the only thing that's like, what don't you want? Tell me. Because the only thing that I could ever, ever foresee saying, the difference of what we weren't doing 10 years ago to today is the ambulance. We can say, I don't want the ambulance, we're going to do private, and I do not want that whatsoever. But that's really the only thing that we could legitimately reduce our levy on, that there is another service out there, and I would not support that whatsoever. So I don't, it's, it's just hard, I feel like we're kind of back in 2010, a little bit, but.
Better.
Better, better, because we're not looking at other problems. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any further discussion on this? All right, all those in favor of approving the resolution, approving the preliminary 2023 tax levy, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the resolution passes. Number nine, discussion, nothing scheduled. Number 10, communications with the city manager. Ms. Crawford, do you have anything?
I have nothing tonight.
Wonderful. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.